I'm here anyway.
So, the state of New Hampshire retirement system has an unfunded liability for both pension and OPEB, which is basically a medical subsidy. So, the retirement system is only funded to a certain level. And then, how that's calculated by actuaries using varying assumptions. And if you look in here, you see not so much on the OPEB, because it doesn't have as much going on. That's a closed group and they're basically just paying benefits for people that they promised at one point. Unfortunately, everybody still contributes to it. But if you take a look at the pension one, which is on page thirty-three, you'll see that the planned-funded position from nineteen to twenty decreased drastically. So what they did there was they changed the discount rate by a half a percent. The reason why it's up as high as it is for twenty-one is because recovery of the market, which basically they're valuing the planned assets at a certain amount, which they're tied into a lot of the stock market and what they hold. And if your your projected liability is based from the actuarial assumptions is a certain amount, and then the planned asset or the planned funded position based off of the assets that they hold comes up, it basically looks like it's funded greatly. The most recent one, which came out in March, planned-funded position is back down around about sixty-eight percent. But how New Hampshire retirement system allocates everything is they take your contributions into the plan during the measurement period in comparison to everybody who's contributing to the plan. And then, they say this is your share of the liability. So, if there's, I think the most recent as of the one that was here, I believe was close to six six point eight billion dollars unfunded for pension. I can't remember the medical OPEB off the top of my head. But it's basically you're being allocated point four five eight keep running the decimals out, percent of that total liability. It's important to know, it's not something that you can pay off. You can't just take it because what ends up happening is you contribute way more to the plan, so you get allocated more of a percentage of it. It's going to fluctuate year to year depending on what the contribution rates are. They set them every two years based off of the recommendations from the actuaries. The last, the most recent one that went into this, I believe across the board, everybody went up anywhere from twenty-two to thirty-one percent for what they had to contribute for on behalf of the employers, the larger portion of which will kind of really went to police and fire. So towns ended up getting a larger, the swing in the percentage for somebody who's heavily staffed with police and fire, they ended up getting a larger percentage. But then, so that's the planned-funded position and then your proportionate share for the covered payroll is essentially what you contributed in as a percentage of what the New Hampshire retirement system is saying is your, your percentage of it compared to the district's covered payroll for pension and OPEB covered wages.
So I have a question on that, just to make it more simple for me. So when I'm looking at those columns on page thirty-three, district proportion of net pension liability and just go left to right, twenty million is the share of a net pension liability, our covered payroll is fourteen million, hundred and forty-three percent is the pension liability. What, in the perfect world, what are those numbers supposed to be? What are those percentages supposed to be? Is it a hundred percent? I mean, is it, is it a negative percentage? I mean?
In a perfect world, the plan would be a hundred percent funded.
Okay, so so that last column would be a hundred percent as opposed to seventy-two percent?
Yes.
Okay.
So, in, I want to say it was the early two thousand and tens, they started this, we're going to try to get the plan funded. Because contribution rates in the nineties and early two thousands, what the, at the time, the state was contributing, plus the municipalities were contributing, what they were contributing on behalf of the employee is nowhere near what it is now. I believe teachers are about eighteen percent right now, and I think that that rate was two to three percent back in the
So they just weren't funding it. It wasn't where they took money out of it to use it for other liabilities. It was they just weren't funding it then. Which in the end has the same result, but it's not, it's just, it's a neglect thing as opposed to an ill use of funds.
Yep.
So
They're legally protected to pay for certain things.
Sure. So Amy, we're at nineteen percent right now, correct? Twenty? Yeah, our percentages.
So again, employees is one and the teachers are the other.
Yeah, it's like seven and nineteen or something, but it's gone. My point is, is the contribution from the last time we had it done to this time that we're currently now, it went down two percent. So
And that would be based off of their most recent actuarial study.
Plan then to try to get it closer to be a hundred? Are we just perpetually going to run in the, you know, in the negative at this point?
Two thousand thirty-nine.
That's the, that's the target date to get it a hundred percent funded by law.
Yeah.
We, employer. I was gonna say, it's going to continue to fall back on municipalities to make those contributions.
They're not going to do benefits cuts or anything like that. They're gonna, that would be a potential conversation point, but it's more likely it would just be tax increases and value added, or whatever it might be to get there.
They have raised, so my, this is my thirty-fifth year in New Hampshire. They raised the contribution rate once. It was five when I started, it's now seven for employees. And they, and then, of course, they used to spend thirty-five percent by the state, was a three-legged stool, the state, employee, and employer. And when I first started this business as soup, it was thirty-five. Third was the state, five percent was the individual, and much less was the employer. But when the state decided to forego their responsibility, it came a little bit on the employee. That was a two percent bump, but it's mostly come on the municipality. And if you look, like, fire, I think is over thirty.
It is.
A third of their salary goes into the pension.
I believe the police officers close to thirty-five percent right now.
And that is something that, you know, is really, and that goes back to, actually, it was Governor Judd Gray, who used to fund this in his budget at three percent liability. So that's what, at one point years ago, the employee or employee paid more than the state. And it finally caught up and they finally put legislation to fix it. And it's not, at seventy-two percent, it would be considered a strong statewide, because many state pensions are funded far less than seventy-two percent. But when it gets, if you're sticking around, eventually, the employer contribution is going to be crazy low. Because it's going to be back where it was. You're wearing ketchup for, for
For another sixteen years.
Yeah, but if you stick around.
I think at the last, at the last New Hampshire GFOA conference, I believe that when they had presented and we kind of looked at what they said, the actual amounts I had to make up for now, I believe that it's in the seventy to eighty percent range of what the current contributions are, are to try and get the plan funded. So that when it finally is funded, the contributions coming in are essentially there to pay the benefits of the people. So, when they finally do reach that thirty-year level where they anticipate it to be funded, rates should, should drastically decrease.
I said this at the Mount Vernon Board Meeting, because Matt came. I was involved at a leadership meeting or school administrators for a cup of coffee. They were talking about bonding the entire retirement debt at a three percent, four percent rate, saving billions of dollars. But the statutory requirement would be that every single, every single board of selectmen, every single school board, imagine getting, trying to get everybody to agree on that? That was an impossibility, but it was fun to talk about. That would have saved incredible amount of money. And there was discussions about, with legislatures about doing that. But once that was a requirement, it, it went very, there's no way that we're going to get that kind of agreement in the state.
Thanks. I didn't mean to ever get us on a rabbit hole, but I wanted to understand that.
One of the things that like I genuinely like.
I guess it's, I'm the chair. So, are there any other questions? Wonderful people. Everybody okay?
Yeah, no, thank you. My question was really going to be related to the Student Activities Fund. I think you've answered, so I just want to clarify that is, we have a new process now, but
We'll just make sure that we're booking this as both revenue and expenditure going forward. So as opposed to just one account.
One big
Where it was in and out. Yeah, yeah. So there wasn't any issue with the funds. It just, because of the of the new ruling, we need to make sure that this is how we, how we account for it. So our office
Athletic fees and
Yep.
Clubs.
Yep. So across all three of the school districts, this is a change that we need to make. I think it showed up as a finding here because of the, the amount.
Yes.
In the other districts, the amount is smaller, but it becomes a more of a material finding because of the dollar amount in Amherst, so.
Not even, not even really, like, it's not a finding.
Okay.
It's a
We're being harsher on ourselves.
Here's a, here's a material journal entry that we had to make.
Yep.
We didn't necessarily have the information to do it right away. We had to get it from the district itself, and then we did our procedures to kind of prove out, like, the numbers that we were provided, yes, they are reasonable.
Right.
And it's, it is truly kind of how most districts track it, where the money comes in, it hits the cash account, and then it goes down and hits the individual student activity that's sitting there as a liability. And then, as the checks get written out of that, you reduce the liability, reduce the cash, and when the deposits come in, increase the liability. Gatsby says, for financial reporting purposes, you can't do that.
Yeah. Yep, we're all good.
Thanks, everybody. Matt, thank you so much for coming. I guess we're going to see one more time? Uh, two, two more times.
Two more times.
Terrific. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt. Thanks so much.
So before we hit public comment, we're going to take a moment to organize two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four Amherst School Board. Terry, congratulations and thank you for your service. Welcome. So we're going to begin by probably filling the chair position. So I would very much appreciate if there was a nomination, a nominee for the Chair of the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four Amherst School Board.
I will nominate Tom Gothier.
Do I have a second? Well, second?
Second nomination.
Tom, are you willing?
If you're not going to be willing to do it, yeah, I guess I will.
Yeah. In discussion.
We, we really like you in this role, Tom. You're great.
Thank you. I'll take, all those in favor? Opposed? Terrific. Tom, congratulations. Thank you for your service. I now turn the gavel over to you, my friend. Thank you, Steve. I appreciate it. So as we along tonight, we get to choose our vice chair now. So I will take a nomination for a vice chair tonight.
Yeah, I'm going to make this nomination too. I'm going to nominate Jason White for vice chair.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Shannon, any conversations? Jason, if the board votes that way, would you be willing to serve in that role?
Sounds great.
Are there any other nominations?
Yep.
Okay, with that said, all in favor of Jason as the vice chair? Five yes, none opposed. So Jason is vice chair. Now I will take a nomination for a secretary, please. Terry?
I nominate Shannon. What you don't know is that every new, we told this to Jason last year, that you automatically become secretary.
I specifically asked for a list of positions, the expectations, and that was not told to me.
Oh, this is an informal one.
You said committees, that's, that's different.
Darn.
This is just a fun surprise, once you get
So I guess then that bears the question, what exactly, what all is involved? I know the denay takes some minutes.
It's primarily, it's note-taking if the denay is not here, and then it's primarily the note-taking capacity in non-public session, which is very vague. Jason can run you through that. Jason, you were a secretary last year. Any further advice for?
It's pretty straightforward and simple.
There's a template.
I appreciate the nomination, but I don't know how to do this. I'd like, I kind of want to decline, because I'd like to be able to fully experience the non-public sessions as a new board member and not be focused on taking notes. I want to understand what's, what's happening and not be so focused on.
That's fair.
Yeah, in the first year. So
Jason, like I did it fine. Was it option, dang it?
So with that said, then I'll nominate Victoria Parisi to be the secretary. Victoria?
I can second that. I, I have done this role before and I'm comfortable taking it on.
Okay. Any, any conversations, any about Victoria, any other nominations? I mean, Terry's the only one left, so.
Uh, thank you, Victoria.
Okay. Any, I guess there's nothing else there. So all in favor of Victoria serving as secretary? Two, three, four, five, and none opposed. All right, so now we will go through our subcommittees. This was a list that you had asked for, Shannon. As we go through this list, if there are questions that you have, it's primarily attending meetings, taking notes, and keeping the board updated as to what goes on at these meetings around town. Some of them are more related to school, some of them are more related to town matters. And then some of them are really seasonal as well, and they really vary in terms of their frequency with which they meet. For example, trustees of the trust fund meets quarterly. Lawrence Spalding, I don't even know when, how often that one meets. Yeah, only as needed. Some of them certainly have more heavy lifting when you talk about board of selectmen. Ways and Means, when the time comes, is usually a heavy lifting one, depending on the frequency of their meetings. Manifest is one that we typically recommend for new board members, primarily because it gives you some good insight into the finances of the school, the bills that get paid, and some of the accounting that goes on there. Budget Committee obviously is going to be a fall, fall type of thing, September through November timeframe. Policies, maybe the heaviest lift of everything, primarily related to the schools. Other than that, they're all relatively straightforward. Obviously, facilities is a big one, but you've been involved in that, so you're, you're well aware of that. Anything I'm missing, Victoria, or anybody else want to comment on something I might have missed?
I'm not sure if you said it out loud, but the Board of Selectmen and CIP are two things that
I did mention the selectmen, that's a fairly, fairly heavy lifting one, because it's just for the number of meetings. I don't know that you need to be at everyone. I've not served in that committee yet. But certainly checking in with them. CIP, you did that last year, right, Victoria?
Yep, Jason and I did.
Okay. Is that heavy?
It's
A lot of meetings on that one?
Nope, it's several meetings in August and September. Yep. Okay, it's usually in the summer. Yeah. He just kind of pops up unexpectedly, and then you go, oh, let me clear my decks.
So with that, let's just run through this list quickly. We'll take volunteers and then we'll hand out assignments if we don't get volunteers. Generally, we like to have two. One is a primary contact and one is a backup. Certainly, both are, are able to go. If you want to alternate, you can certainly do that as well with the person that you're in that committee with. So, starting off with PTA. Okay, Shannon, anyone else?
I can be backup.
Okay. I'm going to type these in as we go, so. Done. Yep. I can do the delegate one for the New Hampshire School Board Association. It's typically just one meeting in the fall. And I don't think we've gone to that for a few years now. There's not been a lot related to us, so. You'd be happy to go? Okay, I will take my name off of it. That is for Shannon.
It's actually pretty cool.
And I can serve as backup if needed, so. Trustees of the trust fund, I can do that one again. It's a quarterly one. I've done that the last couple of years, so happy to fill in there. And then we were talking with Bob Grunbeck about some items in the trustees of the trust fund too. We talked about that deliberative, I believe it was, so I'll make sure we follow up with him on some of those conversations we have as well. Lawrence Spalding. I'm happy to do that one as well.
Yeah, that's one of our
Yep. Uh, the wellness committee. Terry, you've served on that one in the past, correct?
I have not, but I would like to.
Okay.
If I have, it's been several years.
So it's a policy required meeting, and state required that we have a wellness committee. It's been dormant. But also between now and the end of the year, we're going to make it less dormant.
Yeah, exactly. As far as I understood, it has not met in a while. I would actually have an interest in that one. I think Victoria is too, by the look on her face. No? Okay. I'm not going to steal it from you, but
I could be the backup.
Okay.
Right, if that we're trying to do a backup for
Yeah, we don't have to have a backup, but if generally, if somebody has an interest in it, you can certainly join one of those. Special Services is not a committee. We have the CIP. I'll do it again. Jason?
I'll do it with Jason again.
Okay, Victoria?
Yep.
Board of Selectmen.
I can take that one.
Yeah.
I'll take it.
Recreation Committee, I did that last year. Shane, you want to do that one again? I can serve as backup on that one. Ways and Means. I don't mind doing that one again.
I can be your backup.
The manifest, Shannon, are you good with that one?
Yes, I do have a question.
Yes.
About the manifest. So I was trying to figure out, I was reading the policy that discussed the manifest, so I think it was like K E B or something. How, like, I know I need to review the signatures every week, but is there additional document, documentation in addition to the policy that kind of lays out what's expected as we're going through the manifest?
Yeah.
Okay.
And to that end, something we're going to talk at the SEU Board Meeting is I'd like to offer to do a training for folks who are either new or maybe want a refresher on how to do the manifest. So Katie and I are going to hopefully try to get everybody together, but if not, we can do, you know, one-off trainings. But there's some really good features in Panadox and in the Google Drive where you can, where you can have an open chat, and you can ask questions of accounting staff and of myself. So we want to make sure that all board members are aware of that. It really streamlines the process rather than us getting emails about, you know, questions. So we can, you know, tag people right in there. You have a tech question, it can go right to Brian. Curriculum, it can go right to Christine, so.
And I'd like to stay a manifest if I can?
Yeah, great.
But I was excited to see that on the SEU agenda.
Yeah, yep. So we'll try to get everyone together. If it doesn't work, we're happy to coordinate.
Okay. So I'll, I'll have that little training and a Q and A opportunity before
Yep, it's all electronic now. It used to be that we, we had physical boxes that we handed off, and that was fun. You went through one by one and checked, but now it's all electronic and it's wonderful, and it is much appreciated by those of us who
Yeah, it's pretty user-friendly, and there's a lot of detail on there and all the backup that you could ever want.
Okay.
Perfect. On POs and checks and, you know, everything accounting-related.
Thank you. Streamlined and lovely. You guys have done awesome with it.
I did miss facilities as we were going down through the list as well.
Yeah, so something I'm going to suggest with this facilities is that from an Amherst School Board perspective, that instead of labeling it as joint facilities, that we label it as Amherst Building and Grounds, that group's been meeting regularly and providing feedback and things like that. And then I think as an SEU Board, we're going to have to figure out if, you know, we have to make sure that we redo that charge and everything else if we're going with the joint facilities group. I'm not sure how, you know, how it's been functioning. So I would, I would love to stay with facilities from the Amherst side of things.
Shannon?
Your list is growing, Shannon.
So the SEU Budget Committee? I don't mind. I can do that one. Christine?
Do nothing else.
And then, lastly, we have policy.
Oh.
Yeah, Shannon. The more you raise your hand, I don't think anybody's going to hate you for it. Especially on policy.
Yep.
Anybody want to do policy with? Correct. I mean, I imagine you can probably change that depending on the committee members, but
That one is a, is a heavy lift during the day, which is hard for I can take, I can take that one.
Okay. And I believe that is our entire list, Christine, if I'm not mistaken, correct? No.
Did we only send one to policy?
Shannon and Victoria.
Okay, sorry.
So are we not doing joint facilities?
No, we did Amherst Building and Grounds instead, so. So that'll be the same, just facilities in general, yeah. And then we'll, because we're we'll fine-tune that. That's going to be something that gets revised anyway, the charge of that entire committee. I don't imagine it'll look the same this year going forward as it did last year. Certainly, the conversations there will have a different tone, but Amherst has a lot of focus specifically on some of the projects that are ongoing right now, including the roof and unit ventilator project at the middle school. So there does need to be a focus there, but that will, we can always modify that once we get a better charge for what JFAK is going to be doing.
We also have Montburn and School Board Negotiation Committee. We're not negotiating that tuition agreement, but we probably can hold off on that.
Because we're only in year, this will be, we're going into year three on that agreement. Have a five-year deal, yes.
I'm happy to be there just in case something comes up.
And I can, I can do that with you, yeah, that's fine.
And then also, oh, we have Recreation Department, please?
Recreation with Shannon and myself, yeah.
Brick School Maintenance, it's on
Correct, that was one I did not add. You were
Oh, yeah, I'm not there yet. And Wellness Committee is the same as Wellness, right?
Yep.
Okay. And then AEA negotiations, I know we're not in negotiations, so I'm not sure if anything comes up. And then A S A, we don't need then it's Brick School Maintenance, but a group of city.
Can you guys describe this, and is there a reason that we need the same people who are doing Amherst Building and Grounds to do that?
So this is for the Brick School.
Right.
It could be the same people, it's fine, but there's actually funding that is sitting in an account that we need some direction on.
Yeah, it's, I'm, I'm happy to serve on that one.
Okay. Yeah, we had a discussion at the SEU Board Meeting about, because it came up as part of the audit, that we need to take a look at those funds, determine how they should be used. We actually should look, relook at the lease agreement between the Amherst School Board and the and the and the SEU. Yeah, so that we have a plan for having this committee and what their work is and what to do with those funds.
But the lease goes for another eight years, I believe, correct? Because then we just
It does.
Within the last two years?
It does, but the problem is, is the lease doesn't mention
The fund itself.
The fund or the committee. So at the SEU Board, there was an agreement to set up a committee. And, but did we not assign people at that SEU Board Meeting? Actually, now that I'm thinking about it.
Wait, maybe we did.
I don't remember either. I feel like we did. I feel like at the SEU Board Meeting, folks
I remember the discussion about having it.
Yep.
We don't have to wait for me. I can get, well, I can find it as we're talking.
Prior years, there's been a different committee for Brick School.
I don't have it.
Because they've been on it some years. And it just doesn't meet very, it didn't meet very often at that point.
Well, let's have Terry do it, and then as we, we need additional support, or if it, if that changes, we can certainly modify it as we go along.
Okay. Sounds good.
And Victoria, I mean, if you're interested in that one, you could certainly
Oh, good.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify so that nobody on the board thought that I could use
Okay, yeah. You guys already have a long list. I don't want to add to yours.
Yeah, Christine, so I left some of those off there. I apologize. I should have relayed that to you before, knowing that we weren't going to need AEA
Oh, yeah, but I'm
Montburn. Yep, so now we're all set. Thank you for taking the notes on that. Jason?
This is not something that we, we've had in the past. This is just an idea. Should we consider potentially having like a liaison to the planning board, if nothing else, or information if they're planning new housing units or things like that, that could then contribute, contribute to a facilities discussion? I just know in the lead-up to the vote, that was one of the, one of the pieces of feedback that I heard in the community, like, well, you guys didn't talk with planning board, but if we officially had I know we did, but I'm saying that was one of the, that was what people were saying, and I'm saying if we had an official liaison to the planning board, would that help with that particular optic?
I mean, it couldn't hurt.
Doesn't hurt, yeah.
Are you volunteering, Jason? Thank you.
That's what I heard. What I heard was
That landed there.
I need this role.
But
I'd be happy to fill it.
Yeah, I mean, I am. I would be willing to do it.
I'm just
I would just I would be willing to do it. I mean, I don't know what it would look like, but I have no problem with reaching out to them and just saying this is something we're considering doing. And, you know, if they're interested in having a conversation and just, even if I if they weren't interested in a conversation, I could attend some meetings and just find out what's going on and report back.
Yeah, I think that's fine. And then, all I can serve is your backup there, so we can tag team it if needed.
I mean, they meet, they meet really frequently.
Yeah, I'm not called frequently, but
Yeah, no, but I think it's a good, I mean, I think it's a good idea. My understanding of the process is right now, if they have any questions for the district, it comes through from Mr. Schenkel to you, you, his counterpart as a superintendent, right? From Nick Shaw. Okay.
Nick sends me an email asking for a possible impact or influence on the schools. And depending on the number of housing units, like, once I got a change from a one to two, that's not, but we've also had some sixty But we've also had some sixty-fives and some thirties coming up.
Right. So I guess my only sort of thing that I would wanna clarify before we send Jason off on his way to these meetings is when those questions come up, is that, i- is it, should the process for our liaison be more that, you know, they bring that back here and we have that discussion with you before, before we.
I, I think most of the stuff that they're, they're gonna propose is probably going to affect the entire town, so it's probably gonna go to the S A U level. So I think it's more for us to have information here. If they have questions for Jason, that, you know, Jason's certainly capable of, or myself, we're capable of answering them. But I would expect them still to go through um, Steve or Mike Berry or Steve in the S A U office, because anything that they do is gonna affect South Heagan as well, or anything that they're gonna propose. So I think it's probably more appropriate for them to continue that method. Um, but then just as long as we're involved and we're aware of what's going on, if we need to jump in and help and assist, it's certainly, um, certainly, we're certainly capable of doing that. But I think anything that we've ever had, I don't think we've had much, but um, you know, we don't necessarily go through John for the Selectmen. We would talk to the, the whole Board, Peter or somebody, whoever, whoever the chair was at the time, so.
And something you could, you could pick up from their minutes. Like, they have a meeting.
Every two weeks.
I think over, it's, it's here at the theater, I think. And um, I mean, it's not, I mean, and I could, I could have written up board notes saying, hey, by the way, I've been noticing a sixty-five, but it's, it's pretty far out there too, you know what I mean? Sometimes it's not imminent. But I, I could certainly do a better job informing the Board of what comes in, probably four or five that come across this year. I think the first three, I ignored them, cause I didn't know. Nick said, you don't ignore these. I stopped ignoring them.
I think it's a great idea.
You have a backup person just because there are a lot of meetings?
Yeah.
Oh, so you're back. Sorry. Well, and that also, I mean, and if there's anything that needs to make it to our agenda, since we have our Vice Chair and our Chair attending as our liaison, they'll also know if there's anything that is a broader word we need to discuss. So how handy that is as a placement.
All right, anything else on committees? Okay. All right. So with that, we will now move to our public comment session of the night. Our first of two that we will have, one now and then one at the end of the meeting before our non-public session. As always, you will have three minutes to say your piece for public comments, say your name and the town that you reside. When you get to the microphone, we do have the Zoom audience again. Uh, public comment is available for that crew as well. The Zoom rules are the same as always. Uh, say, uh, put your name in your, uh, on the screen, turn on your camera, turn on your microphone, name, what town you live in, and then you'll have three minutes as well uh, to deliver your public comment. So with that, I will open the floor internally first, and then we'll go to the Zoom audience if there are folks that would like to speak there.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, welcome to the new school year. Superintendent, administrators, principals, Minutetaker, Danae, and school board members. Uh, congratulations on a very well-run campaign and welcome to the new member, Shannon. And congratulations to you, Terry, three times in a row. Since, that's uh, pretty good. Uh, we pray that you all will serve with honor and distinction. You are the governing body of the Amherst School District. The matters before you are real and will benefit or impact students and residents of New Hampshire, of Amherst, New Hampshire. Please listen to all residents and use wisdom. Problems and issues that existed before the election are still real and must be resolved. Amherst is full of intelligent and successful people. I implore you to seek out these people, not just those who say what you want to hear, but those who say what you need to hear. There will not be any progress unless people can exchange thoughts and ideas respectfully. We must be able to have civil discourse, especially where there's disagreement. Honest conversations will start the process of resolving problems. For a second year in a row, the Amherst School Board has failed to deliver an acceptable budget and a bond for an excessively large elementary school. It is also the third time in six years, A S B has failed to pass an acceptable budget. Clearly, A S B is not listening to the community. Rubber stamping and cheerleading loses and erodes the public trust. This community does not need to be educated. All of Amherst needs to be served. As a community member, I and many, many others expect great educational outcomes, not more excuses. We expect good stewardship with public funds, not a demand for more educational experimentation. We expect due diligence with the planning of any major projects, not the shameful purchase of more swampland and then sweeping it under the rug. The community will not accept the big ask, new school building. It will not, it will not be crazy to come back with the same big ask, but insane. We will not be dismayed anymore. It's past time to have real and honest discussions about using the available school classroom space in Amherst, New Hampshire. Is it better, it is better to re, is it better to reconfigure the buildings and school districts or spend hundreds of millions of dollars to have the biggest school building in New Hampshire? Voters have spoken again. Let us work together to restore trust, educational excellence, and good stewardship with the support of all residents of New Hampshire, of Amherst, New Hampshire. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne.
I provided it.
Anybody else in person? Ellen? So Ellen is our uh, new Amherst School District Moderator. So we have invited, we didn't invite her, she was coming tonight anyway, but we did open up the floor for um, Ellen to have her comments about the, the way, actually, I'll just let you take Ellen and then we can have a conversation after. So, there we go. We have three minutes and if we need more, we can.
I can, I can. To enjoy listening to your broadcasting voice.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, so I wanted to come tonight um, to congratulate Shannon and Terry for a um, honest and wonderful campaign that you both put forward. I have a lot of respect for everyone on this board, um, but it was wonderful to see your strength behind your um, character. I appreciated that. So kudos to you guys. Um, so as moderator, I have um, the responsibility to appoint a Ways and Means, as you're all aware. So I'm thrilled to hear, Tom, that you'll continue on. I'd like to work um, with you or the Board in total to do a couple of things. Um, I'd like to discuss the mission statement that is currently on the S A U website. I'm going to work with George Bauer and Steve Coughlin to provide some consistency through the schools and the town and the expectation of a Ways and Means or Advisory Finance. Um, I'd also like to put together a handbook for those who are um, appointed to Ways and Means, so they can have a clear understanding of right to know, a clear understanding of what the expectations are in terms of meetings. Um, I think that's vitally important. So, Tom, you and I can work on that. Um, I'm happy to kind of work on a draft, communicate it with all of you, Amy, probably you included, and our new or interim superintendent, just because I know you're all affected by the time it takes sometimes to answer questions. Uh, so I want that to be a part of this handbook, so it is streamlined and so that you are not burdened unnecessarily during that insanely busy time. So, um, I have started the process. I've reached out to the current members, um, or who served in this last term, who are currently still on the website, um, and asked them if they are interested to move forward with the meeting. Um, I also have a handful of other people who are interested in being a part of it. I'm looking for a real balanced group of humans, young people, older people, people who've lived here for a long time, people who've lived here for a few months and don't understand that we have several school districts in our town. Um, so if you have anybody that reaches out to you that says they're interested, please share my S A U email um, so I can communicate with them. Um, I also made a request until that we have the time to go through the current reports that are on the website, um, including the tax estimator. I'm not sure how we can estimate the future taxes without knowing what budget increases or decreases we're gonna have. Um, so I'm asking those be archived for now until we really have the time or the former Ways and Means group um, makes the edits that were requested of them. Um, so I discussed that with the people who take care of those things. Um, that's about it. Any questions?
All right, yep.
First, welcome. Uh, I know it's, it's a very important role that you're filling, so thank you for being willing to do it. I am really excited to hear about um, really making sure everyone's on the same page and doing some training. I think that from pre, being a previous member and, and from other members who've served it over the years, there's sometimes um, the clarity around and, and inconsistency has, has been an issue. So making sure that just everyone understands exactly what they're signing on for and, and how to progress, I think, is gonna be really helpful. Um, when you do establish your team, I know that Tom is our representative, but I would love it if we could all come meet them, if you can invite us maybe.
Or I'll invite them to your meeting.
Either way.
We have one fewer meeting to attend.
Exactly, because I, I, I do feel like it's good to, to set up that relationship early so that we can get to know each other. And I love seeing new faces and new engaged citizens. So I would assume there will be people I don't know, just as there were this year, a few I hadn't known before.
Great.
Um, and I think that's it. I, I really appreciate you laying out your plan so that we can all work collaboratively and especially working with the town, because I know originally this role came about um, as something that very much mimicked what was happening at a town level. And so, going back to making sure that we have consistency across, I think, is a really good thing.
I do too. And um, on, to just piggyback on that, Terry, I think many of you have probably been on Advisory Finance or Ways and Means. If I was in your position too, and you, you kind of jump in and you're lost in that budget, that live budget. So, any suggestions that you have, please email me. I wanna say publicly, I will not communicate with anybody um, through any other source of communication, no personal emails, no Facebook. So only my S A U email will be used to communicate um, with anybody. So, um, again, please, if you know of anybody interested, they may know me and email me in another way, only my S A U website, please, or email.
Shannon?
If we have folks come to us who are interested and have questions, is it a three-year term? I mean, is that, I, I feel like that's what's, I've known Ways and Means to always sort of have a three-year sort of commitment, or is that, are we, this is part of what you're, you're working on right now?
I think that's, I'd like to talk with George and Steve. Um, and remain kind of consistent in terms of expectation, um, because it's an appointed role. You want everybody to come back year to year? Cause like, your second year, you really get your groove.
Right, there's, there's something to institutional knowledge and, and understanding what you're doing, but, okay. But you're, you're not sure yet.
I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you.
Victoria?
Yep, the only other thing that I wanted to mention, um, you talked about a handbook and I think um, as, as someone who has been looking through lots of different archives for many different things, it would be helpful if, when that handbook is created, um, to bring it back to the Amherst School Board so that it can become part of the minutes that we take for a meeting, so that people, you know, twenty years, thirty years in the future can find different things to reference.
I'd love that documentation too, so that's fantastic.
And, and I would like to just make it clear though, that uh, Ellen is the moderator of this, so the school board may, may look at this and, and may have opinions on, on things, but it's gonna be more procedural as opposed to what we demand the role be for Ways and Means. It's not meant to be that rubber stamp. It's, it's certainly meant to be an impartial board and, and it's my goal to make sure that it stays that. I don't want there to be any confusion that we're gonna try to, to rig the game in terms of nominations or in terms of a handbook where they have to be nice and can only say nice things about the Chair mainly. Um, but, you know, I just wanna make sure that that, that is clear and that's public knowledge as we go forward with this. And I know it's Ellen's intent to, not that you wouldn't, you wouldn't do that, but I wanna make sure that it's.
Very much my intent, Tom, to make sure that this group remains somewhat separate from the Board. You'll come together during your meetings with the Chairs and, you know, Board people, not Board people, but direct department people. Um, I think that's really important. So, right, there's a liaison. Do you need to come to every meeting? That's something we can discuss. I plan to attend meetings just to make sure again that all the rules are being followed. Um, so, yeah, I think that's incredibly important.
Great. Thank you all.
You're welcome.
Any other public comment in person tonight? I will open it up for our Zoom audience. If you'd like to speak tonight, you can raise your virtual hand, put your name in your avatar, turn on the camera, and then you'll have three minutes. Give it another few seconds here, seeing none. And seeing no more public comment in person, we will move on to our next item on the agenda tonight. Uh, Christine, I think we'll go, before we go to the curriculum, if you don't mind, we'll, I know, we actually, we'll do the curriculum presentation first. Make sure, do we need to share? So there is a large packet of information for the curriculum for English Language Arts in the agenda tonight. So you can find a lot of the information, a fairly detailed plan, uh, month to month or quarter to quarter, if you will, a, a chunks of time over the course of the year for K through eight. Um, so I will let Christine elaborate on that. And then after this, we'll, we'll talk about the consent agenda. We'll be able to approve the consent agenda and that will approve that curriculum material to be placed at the, uh, placed online, but also placed in the vert, the physical binder at the S A U offices.
Great, thank you. Um, uh, throughout the year, this year, we've really been looking at all of our curricula and looking to really refresh, reapprove and repost most of that. Um, certainly with math, we had pretty significant changes this year, K five, but with many of our content areas, um, it, it doesn't represent a change in our content, really more of a change in our format for a number of reasons. One, we wanted to make our format a lot more user-friendly for the public, so we recreated our format. And um, hopefully um, this is a little bit more user-friendly. The other thing is when we post it to our website, we're actually able to post it as a Google Doc, which allows um, families to translate into any language um, that Google supports, which is really helpful, or it can even be read aloud. So, um, we just felt, helped, felt that the accessibility features in Google um, and really refreshing these, um, both the, the format and um, the way they're presented on the website would be a helpful piece um, for our community and our family. And as Tom mentioned, um, we are also printing a physical copy for anyone wants that, who, that wants to come into the S A U to review that. So I uh, have our um, grade five through eight English Language Arts curriculum. And this uh, curriculum is the same, fifth and sixth grade in Mont Vernon, um, and then it's five through eight in Amherst. So, um, we've um, really developed our curriculum over a number of years with our teachers. The grade level teachers have really worked to create and develop and then refine, um, make little adjustments and changes over the years. So this is a great chance for us to kind of refresh our approval because a few, um, could be a few little tweaks or minor changes to units that have happened. Um, uh, certainly uh, post-COVID and some of our, our COVID changes, so all of those are captured here. Um, with uh, all of them, we, for each grade level, we have just an overview page, which helps to provide a quick snapshot of the units that are studied throughout the year. And then we go into a little bit more depth after that, um, with details about the unit, a summary, really looking at the competencies and standards that are assessed and really, um, what is it that students should be taking with them, those enduring understandings and essential questions. With English Language Arts, we try to integrate the reading and the writing as best that we can um, for students. And really depending on the unit, you can see how there's, um, with most of our units, there's really tight alignment. Or sometimes a unit focuses a little bit more on the writing, but we're still doing a lot of reading during that time, or sometimes the opposite. Um, and often, uh, we pull themes from social studies as well, which you can't quite see from this document, but it's a nice piece that we're able to make connections um, across um, both English Language Arts. Um, too often, social studies, uh, not as often on the, the science side, especially in five, six, when we have our STEM Humanities Model that really allows for that um, uh, integration or coordination, I, it would be a better term for what we do. Um, and we don't really use a, a set um, resource with this, you know, in, in kindergarten through fifth grade for math, we have our, our Bridges resource, which is really our core resource. Our teachers have really worked to develop these units themselves um, and really use supplemental texts and resources, um, really to help them with these. We do also have a lot of online resources for our teachers. Um, they use um, Newsella, which is a really great resource for our teachers. And then um, also, you know, Common Lit is another one that is used often. So that's where they pull many of the um, resources and um, and student-facing resources, certainly. So that's where they pull many of the resources and and student-facing resources, certainly. The, these documents, there are more kind of deeper level planning documents that the board doesn't approve. They're really for our teachers, and those are things that might change a little bit from year to year. But they do have a bank of the the different texts that they use often with each of these units. But again, those can flex from year to year. We have kind of a bank that we can go to, some different novels, short stories and so on, that kind of tie in with each of these units. So that can vary from year to year. So it's a really nice balance of having a set unit with set parameters to it, expectations and standards. But then also a little bit of flexibility to tie in with, you know, student choice, student readiness, student need. So it it is that perfect that balance of having our set curriculum, but also allowing for some some flexibility on the teacher's side. We really do work together as a team to be making a lot of those resource decisions. So I don't have a, you know, detailed presentation, just wanted to really give an introduction to the curriculum. Since there aren't major changes, it's really just a refresh, maybe a few minor little tweaks with some of our units. And this is certainly ongoing work. You know, often every two to three years, we look back at our curriculum, we make changes as needed, and we certainly come forward to the board with any changes. But I'm happy to take questions.
Any questions, Shannon?
Just a minor question, but on the grade five curriculum, it says that at AMS, they do national parks. And then at Mont Vernon, it's revolution. I was just curious why it's different.
Yeah, that's a good question. So this has been kind of an interesting little challenge. But also great to coordinate and discuss. We do like our curriculum to be the same across the schools, but really the exact topic that they might be, that's the research unit. The topic that they might be focusing on can vary sometimes. And the reason specifically for that is that in fourth grade, when we transitioned in fourth grade to the units of study that we do, the Revolutionary War is actually one of the literacy topics in fourth grade. So that is taught in fourth grade, but really more of an introduction and really more on the literacy side, not as much on the social studies side. But it's always been in the social studies curriculum in fifth grade. The AMS teachers have found that it's a little bit too redundant to dive deeply into research with Revolutionary War for their students. While the Mont Vernon students, and again, it's just that approach, the Mont Vernon students have found that they've still been able to dig a little bit more deeply. Something that we started talking about this year, we actually spent some time on in-service, you know, looking at, can can we bridge that gap? What does that look like? And this was a year for us to really take stock of how much our fourth grade students know, how deeply we go into the Revolutionary War and social studies, and then what that impact is in English. So that is one of the things that might be changing, but at least we're still teaching the same standards and even sometimes using some of the same resources. It's just the topic that students are digging into is a little bit different.
Other questions? Jason?
Yeah, I have a, I have a few questions, some of which you already answered. But but still, still other questions, and please stop me if I'm getting too detailed. I I like EOL curriculum. Get a little too ramped up. But one, one point that you made that I liked was you said, like, you know, when you look at most of the units, they're tightly aligned, right? The reading and the writing are tightly aligned, which I like, right? So that a character's journey, the reading and writing makes sense to me, right? It's, it's about the story arc, it's and it's about the character, and then writing a narrative, right? So that makes sense to me. I get confused by the next one, the reading and writing, and how Tuck Everlasting fits into the idea of facts versus opinions. And because of, and I could be not remembering correctly, I've not read Tuck Everlasting decades. Isn't that where he finds like?
It's an everlasting spring.
Right.
So with that, I believe what they do is they're forming an opinion as to whether it would be good to live forever or not. And then they're trying to justify that. And I think that it's, you know, they're formulating those opinions, not limiting just to that fact versus opinion, but really looking more broadly at the reasons that would be good to live forever or not. And within that, you know, it it is interesting when that novel's so rich and there's so much to do with that. The students get really excited, so they do end up coming up with really interesting ideas that aren't necessarily supported by facts in their opinion, which can get a little bit tricky, but also kind of interesting to see where students take that.
And then, this is going to be super nerdy question.
Okay.
I know in a lot of it, it says like word study like that, and you already mentioned that we're not using necessarily one particular source. But are we, this is maybe more of a curiosity question, teaching like morphology and etymology?
Yes, that's a great question. That's something that we've kind of struggled with and evolved. This year in sixth grade, these sixth grade teachers, based on feedback from the fifth grade teachers, were really concerned that the current sixth grade at AMS needed a little bit of a boost and a little bit more support this year around that specifically. We have struggled to find the right resource. So at the elementary level, we use foundations, which if you talk to Wilson, they say students know everything they need to know about spelling when they finish foundations. So we've really taken that approach, and we've struggled a little with that, and Kathleen and I have a lot of, have had a lot of discussions around that. We've even since moved foundations to, the third grade foundations is both in third grade, and then we continue it in fourth grade, because we don't want to rush through that third grade, because we want them to fully experience the the entire continuum. So in making that change, we weren't sure whether that would resolve a lot. Again, still really helpful in those upper grade levels, base words, root words, suffixes. That word study does need to continue. We've done it on a smaller scale and not quite as comprehensive as we probably maybe need to dig a little bit more deeply into. But this year, because of some of the feedback from fifth grade last year, we did, you know, implement a common spelling resource for students this year. I have not gathered feedback yet on that. Our teachers are still implementing. Unfortunately, arrived late because we worked over the summer to really put it in place for our students. We had luckily budgeted for spelling workbooks. And, you know, we were really reviewing the summer. By the time we ordered, it was a little bit late. So I wanted to give teachers really that full rest of the school year for feedback, and we'll be looking at that. And then we'll be looking at how that might impact fifth grade for next year. What does fifth grade need? What did they notice this year about their students? So it's a question that it's not reflected probably as well in this curriculum. And that might be a change that we make as we've kind of finalized that best resource that's really going to support our students. So maybe a longer.
Can I just jump in here on the same concept here, the spelling concept? We've, prior to COVID, we talked about our incoming fifth graders didn't have the spelling skills that they needed. So while we're talking about that middle school and what we need there, I think we also need to make sure that we're reflecting prior to that fifth grade jump, where foundations might be giving some skills, but what skills are they not receiving? Because I know that we now have some kids where spelling workbooks in fifth grade are only going to help those fifth graders. We're still going to have those sixth, seventh and eighth graders who need that spelling support. So rather than, I, I, sometimes I find these things a little like banging your head against the door, because we're talking about the same things year after year. And I know you guys, you guys do this and you're in it. Classroom teachers are in it every day and year after year, so are you all. But as a school board also, for us to know that there's a spelling issue several years ago, COVID happened. But now coming out of it, I I think it's something that the community expects and that the school board expects us to find a way to to get through. And to be able to show the proof of where the students have come and what they've learned.
Yeah, and I'm happy to share, you know, a June board meeting, if that makes sense, for what feedback we receive from teachers after using those resources. And then what our plan will be for next year and continuing to support our students with spelling.
Yep, and if there are any online resources that we, you know, can direct families to who are looking for additional resources, even if it's something outside of what the classroom teacher is able to support, that would be something else that we could reach out to the community with.
Everybody else?
I'll finish up super fast. This is just, this is, I just want to say, you know, thank you for the work. Thank you for including the teachers in it and providing them with autonomy to be flexible in the classroom. Because as we know, students in each class are different, even though they're from the same town. So I really appreciate, appreciate that. I obviously, as a former seventh grade EOL teacher, I really appreciate the outsiders being in seventh grade curriculum, because I love the outsiders. But, so, but thank you, because I, I think it's important for the teachers to be involved. They're the ones doing it on the ground. So I appreciate you considering their voice and working as a team with them.
Thanks.
Terry?
Okay. First off, just a follow-up question to kind of Victoria's, is that I know that there wasn't a ton of change in this particular curriculum. But are there any specific areas that we, that we have been trying to address? Things that we know are areas where we, like, I loved hearing that there are tie-ins with some of the other subjects. And that that's really, that you're thinking of, of their whole thing is, okay, let's not overload them on this, or let's support that. So that stuff I love to hear. But is there, is there any area that that we know we need work that this starts to address? Or that you've tweaked to address?
Question. They've been tinier little tweaks over the past few years. We've, you know, I I think fifth grade, we've tightened up a little bit, a little bit more, while we still, you know, separate topic for research. But, you know, we've really looked at those themes and really building out our novels. Again, as Jason mentioned, that choice piece, so that's something that we did, especially in fifth grade. And really came together that character's journey unit has kind of evolved a little bit, you know, over the years. So that's something that we've looked at. Some of our writing tasks that we've done were actually our pace tasks. So when we did all of our pace work, some of those kind of remained, that idea of the opinion writing, that actually came from a pace task that was part of it, and then we kind of changed the task and and made it work with Tuck Everlasting, because that was such a a strong book. So Tuck is a newer book that we've done, so they've been kind of really working with teachers. And teachers have said, hey, this unit isn't quite working for students. Or, you know, this core novel was so great, and we kind of moved away from it. Can we bring it back in? Another example is in seventh grade with Animal Farm. We got away from Animal Farm for a number of years, and then a few years ago, seventh grade said, hey, you know, we think kids are, you know, this ties in nicely with social studies, and we think kids are really going to connect with Animal Farm. And Animal Farm's a reach for seventh grade, but it's, they do an unbelievable job with Animal Farm. So it's been tweaking units based on really student interest and student need and making little adjustments that may not be as deeply reflected here in the sense that, yes, maybe the, a few of the essential questions are changing. But again, it's, it's really building out based on student interest and what we feel like really grabs them. We, our goal is is for students to become readers.
Right. And I appreciate that approach that, you know, we we received a lot of of feedback in the last year on many, many topics. And one thing that comes up a lot is, oh, it's constantly changing, it's constantly, you can't get your arms around it, and it changes again. So I think that making very thoughtful changes and and tweaking rather than wholesale changes is actually the better approach, right? You're saying, what is working and let's reevaluate, and what can we tweak, what can we make better? And so I I very much appreciate saying, we feel good and strong about our general plan, but that we are always making improvements and saying, you know, how are kids right now, you know, responding to this? Does it work for them? Does it not? Does it work for our current staff? And so I appreciate that cumulative, let's, let's learn and tweak rather than make broad strokes. Because I think the broad strokes are are hard to keep up with. Though I appreciate that both things are occurring, that sometimes we need bigger changes like math, but that sometimes we are able to do smaller. So, and I really love the the one on respect in sixth grade, because I feel like especially so much of this year has been really having the kids take ownership of their choices and how they treat each other and how they treat the facilities. And and really building that into their experience. And I think that it's nice that their curriculum is 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 really speaking to that as well. And so that's one that stood out for me, that I know that that's just a broader thing we're doing with that age group. So, no, thank you for explaining. I really appreciate it, because sometimes when you see it, it's like, okay, so we didn't really change anything.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, moving on tonight to the consent agenda. We have nine items on there. I lost my, lost my agenda here. I believe it's nine items on the consent agenda, including a couple of minutes. I'll take a motion to pass the consent agenda as is.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Victoria and a second to open a conversation. From Terry, I have a second. Any comments, questions, points that anybody would like to bring out, particularly for our principals while they are still here tonight? Thank you again for for coming as always. Jason?
Sure, I'll be brief, I promise. So Kathleen, for you, real quickly, if you could see two kind of staff updates, reading specialist and anticipated elementary school teacher, I don't know if you could talk a little bit more about those? And I guess I have really specific questions, like about the reading specialist, so we're looking for somebody who's OG Wilson. You know, if you could talk to that and thoughts were about that.
I'd be happy to. So we are currently in the middle of a search process right now for a reading specialist, obviously due to a retirement from a position from last year. So we have a committee with some reading specialists on the committee too, administrators and a classroom teacher. We've had first round interviews, we're bringing in a candidate for a demo lesson, working with students to kind of see the candidate in action. Kind of get a sense of, you know, what they might be planning for, you know, a group of of young readers. So we're definitely looking for someone who has experience in explicit phonics and phonemic awareness instruction. And we're also looking for someone who has some experience in coaching and supporting teachers in tier-one practices in the classroom. It's a challenging find. You know, we're hopeful that we find the right fit to to join our really dynamic group right now. So actively in the process and hoping we get the right candidate. The classroom teacher position is that position that was in the proposed budget that has, you know, we have not yet, you know, made a decision over class sizes yet. So I think that Superintendent Chamberlain will be sharing more on that, as it is posted as anticipated right now.
Did you have a follow-up, Jason?
Yeah, no, yeah, just quickly, I just kind of like a thank you. I think it's important that, you know, as these votes are coming out, I really appreciate in in your packet that you're talking about a parent education night, right? We all need to come together, we all need to recognize that we all have to work together towards some goals. So I really appreciate your willingness and ability to reach out to the parents in the broader community and say like, hey, let's, let's work together. And let's fix whatever we need to fix and improve whatever we need to improve. So I really think that's a great idea and really innovative on your, on your part. And hopefully, family members will will show up. I'll be there.
Yeah, thank you. We're excited about that. That was an outcome of some of our NTSSB work with all of the classroom teachers. We'll have a committee work on a series next year, and we'll partner with the PTA to host some, hopefully, information sessions that vary, right? So academic topics, but also social, emotional things and parenting as well, if that's, you know, a need. So we'll continue collecting out, collecting feedback from teachers, but then also reaching out to PTA and parents in the community too. Looking forward to that work.
Shannon?
Yeah, so that actually leads into one of my questions as well. I love the parent education offerings committee and that you're working on that. So is your timeline, your expectation is to start rolling those out next year?
Yes.
Yeah. And then I had another question on the peer observation.
Sure.
And so you have, you have seven educators signed up to to observe or to be observed?
Both, yeah, both. So we asked kind of like, can you do both, right? Let us, let let someone come into your room and then also go see someone else. Totally voluntary opportunity, just kind of wanted to see who might be interested, and then my job is to help facilitate that, right? So to offer coverage, maybe cover their classrooms, so they can spend some time with their colleagues and engage in some of this work. It was an outcome of the committee last year with Bridges, when we made that decision to adopt the curriculum. One of the areas was, next year, this would be really helpful to offer for teachers who are interested. So we have a crew that are interested, and they're working on developing those schedules.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Terry? I pretty much yelled that, sorry.
So all right, two of mine have already been asked. I was going to ask about the parents and about the observations. So I can just leave the fun one for you of, do we have dates yet for the final music shows?
Yeah, so we have a few music shows coming up, one being next Wednesday for third grade, so April 19th. And they're all available on the SAU calendar. So there's one in April and then two in May. Second grade and first grade will be in May. The fourth grade performance was incredible. Mr. Allward and Miss Anderson just did a fantastic job. And this year, we had one of our clubs, the backstage crew with fourth graders put together the sets, which really made it even more meaningful.
I've heard many things, including that it was standing room only and
Yes.
That would have been one of the things that's, that's when I think that families get to feel the physical crunch of our facilities. Um, that would have been one of the things that's, that's when I think that, um, families get to feel the physical crunch of our facilities. Is when we, we try to have something like this and that we are all together. I wonder if maybe we might look in the future about, um, moving anything to the middle school stage where there's a slight bit more space.
Yeah, I think it's, um, a conversation we've had. We've hosted things like the circus night, um, at the high school in years past. Two years ago, we did it at the high school, um, in the gym when we had the full third grade. We also run two performances for every grade level music show because we cannot fit all of the students in the space and on the riser. So each music performance has half of the grade and then about a half an hour later, the other half of the grade comes. So, um, it's kind of a twofer at, uh, Clark Wilkins. You get to go, go to both.
So, yeah, I, I just, I know that it's such a, such a positive thing and have as many supporters there as we possibly can, right? And so whatever we can do to continue to look for ways to get everybody in and supporting our kids. So I'm excited those are coming up and I'm hoping at least one of those will fall on my calendar.
Yeah, that would be great. We'd love to have you.
Um, and then on the middle school master schedule updates. Oh, you're like, don't ask about the master schedule.
About it.
You have any specific questions? Um, I wondered, I know that it's, it's for next year, but like, how soon would you be making decisions? And when might we hear what's coming from this committee?
And maybe what's the intent as well?
Yeah. Sure. So, um, one of the things that I, you know, going into it, coming in this year with a schedule that was already made for me for the, the master schedule. Um, we had some small tweaks that we made in August, just to make things not overlap. So for instance, we had places where services would overlap, like our reading teachers, um, would have like a 10 minute overlap. So kids would be coming in and they were, they would still have kids. So they would have to find ways to support students in the room. While the, while they're like basically managing two groups of students or two grades of students. So that was kind of a small thing that we just fixed before the beginning of the school year. I didn't do any major shakeups. The intention being that we would do a little bit of a bigger overhaul. I had really, really, really big dreams for an overhaul, to be honest with you. At the same time to, to try to do what I want to do with, with some of the constraints we have can be a little tricky. So we're managing four grades in a building. We've got some limiting factors like lunches and how many people fit in cafeteria and specials? And how many specials teachers and number of, you know, the number of minutes needed for certain things. So that's kind of been a, an interesting process. Also when teachers are needed for meetings. So right, when we have specials time, that alleviates time for teachers to be able to go to meetings and even our special ed staff to be able to go to meetings. And so, um, we've looked at a bunch of different, a, a couple of different iterations. I was, I, I had the, the fortunate opportunity to go to a New England, uh, New England League of Middle School scheduling conference and learn a little bit about what a master scheduling process looks like. I will be honest and say that when I went into it, I didn't realize it was as hard as it actually is, um, to figure out a school schedule that works. My overall goal, um, and the schedule fits within this is to really bring AMS back to a full middle school model. And what good middle school practice is, um, going to that workshop was very affirming for me. Because all the things I learned when I was getting my master's degree in middle level education in 2005 are still truly the best practices in middle level education. So it was very affirming to me, um, that even recent research and recent, um, publications, um, support those things and support those ideas. So the schedule is one piece of that. Um, looking at how we can make sure that we are making best use of instructional time, um, is something I've had a lot of, uh, conversations with Steve and Christine about, um, making sure that again, we're getting teachers their time to be able to plan, making sure that we limit. We've got a lot of transitions in our day and that can be a bit of a waste of time. So thinking about how we can make those blocks a bit longer, um, or, or at least, you know, have some flexibility. So kids aren't traveling back and forth across the school and they're just kind of within their little area. Some of that's building map as well. But our, our overall goal is to make it a little bit more efficient and effective, um, and to make the best use of the instructional time we have. Um, while also meeting the needs of all of our students. So our students who need services, our students who need enrichment, our students, you know, what middle school, what a fifth grader needs versus what an eighth grader needs. Figuring out how to best handle the fact that we have dismissals that happen at the end of the day for various reasons, whether it be sports or, or orthodontics or doctors, those types of things. So we're trying to kind of balance everything. It's probably not as big of an overhaul as I thought it was going to be, but I definitely think we'll see some impactful changes. Um, and we can continue to consider what more changes we can make over the, the coming years. So I'm really looking to do that. My, my goal is to get that done in May so that before teachers leave, I'm able to say, here's what our schedule is going to look like next year, or at least here at some versions. Give me your feedback and then we can go from there. Yeah.
Shannon?
Long, I'm sorry.
And I'm going to ask for just a little bit more because in your report, you specifically call out world language.
Yeah.
Program. So, um, is there, is there anything you can share with us about what you're definitely looking to do there? Is that?
I guess we're just curious about in general, um, world language over, you know, there are some middle schools that do world language over a seven and seventh and eighth grade. There are some middle schools that do sort of exploratory world language in the fifth and sixth grade. Mount Vernon, um, currently doesn't have a world language program at, you know, in, in the sixth grade and we do, we do. So that kind of leads to a little bit, some differences and, and I guess kids catch up. But, um, we're just kind of looking at big picture, what's working, what's most effective? What's gonna, what's gonna give our students the best experience at the middle level i- in world language? So those are the, those are the things we're currently looking at, um, but have not made any final decisions on yet.
We'll, we'll hear more.
Yes. There was an email that went out about for fifth graders going into, uh, registering for a world language. We said, hang tight, uh, while we, while we figure that out.
So you're anticipating that the world language program and offering could change before next school year?
Potentially. We don't know. That, that was kind of a conversation we had, um, just very recently at a leadership, at a leadership meeting. Um, and if we were going to make that change, we would obviously come to, come to the board with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Victoria?
I have a hard question and it's for the two of you and it's for the two of you over here. Teacher effectiveness, um, evaluations and supervisions. We have a vast difference between what's happened at Clark Wilkins and what's happened at AMS. And I, I don't know why there's a difference. I'd love to hear kind of the, the backstory of why there's a difference and how important we think that difference is or isn't, um, when we're looking at it on the paper.
Sure. Um, and, um, we changed the evaluation calendar to go through the end of the year. And actually, um, like I did last year at AMS, um, I'm picking up, I'll be starting to get into classrooms and, and taking some, uh, carrying some of the water on the evaluations. Like I did last year, now that we're, we're getting through most of the budget process. The, it, there's no question that right now five through eight is different than a preschool through four, just the intensity of the building and, um, the time. And, um, dealing with Kristen's getting used to, you know, getting used to the process. I'm, um, very encouraged of, by her growth as an instructional leader, um, in the team. But it's been a new team, Carol's second year, Kristen's first year. Um, so I think we're on the right path. You know, we have, you know, we meet regularly and I think that I'm going to pick up quite a few, quite a few of the informals. And I think we'll get to where we need to get to. And I think year two, as, as the team can solid, solidifies, I think we'll expand, um, our ability to meet the expectations regarding educator effectiveness. Next year's, you know, we're also going to talk about, um, the summit or the, a retreat this summer about taking a pretty comprehensive look and continue the work we started last year on educator effectiveness, which could include and expect to includes a summative evaluation component for some of our staff. So the work is going to get more robust. So we need to get more efficient and we need to be more active. But, um, you know, Chris and I, um, talked about her year. Four or five staff members leaving during the year. The, um, you know, significant investment in time in supervising related to just bathrooms and things like that. And also just first year and also master schedule and develop the relationships. So I think we're where we need to be and I, and, and but we talk, Kristen and I talk about this and how we can continue to move. And I think things will settle, but I think she has put the time in and the team has put the time in where it's been, has to be. But I think we're not, the time limit isn't, and this is what I really like, that we can, we will observe all the way through the end of the school year. So just because the evaluation, the contract component is done, does, doesn't mean the work is done. So we have another seven, eight weeks to, to keep chipping away and I'm looking forward to it. I appreciate, uh, appreciate Kristen allowing me to get in classroom. So, nice and good.
So as a, as a follow up to that, Victoria, if you have a question on this, my, my concern is from a public standpoint, if we have informal observations and then the formal observations. So the formal ones, all but three of those are done. My concern is most of us here in our jobs go through some sort of comprehensive review, um, for our annual job position, sometimes more than once annually. So I'm concerned, I know that there are contractual obligations and contractual limitations in terms of, um, you know, in terms of the way that teachers are hired and for lack of a better term, fired and promoted, not promoted, but how the staffing is done. So I, it's hard for me to reconcile that we've only done informal observations of 31 out of 176 informal observations. But we've given out, we've awarded all the contracts for next year. So I think that is something that we, we have to tweak. I know we go through the year and not everybody's up for, um, a, a renewing contract or moving from, um, a single year contract to the continuous continuing contract. But I feel like there, there has to be a plan in there to be able to review everybody before contracts go out. If for no other reason to say, yep, we're, we're confident in this and, and we're ready to go. Other than just an informal walking by a classroom, looking in and saying, oh, hey, this, this looks good. And, um, I just, it's a, it's a perspective thing for me, but it's a concern that, um, obviously there are a lot of circumstances and I understand why it's, it's not been done, but it's to me is a concern that we've given out contracts for next year. But a vast number, 20% have been completed. So.
And, you know, we have to triage, we have to front load, um, obviously as you just alluded to, the continuing contract and the probationary, the continuing contract. Um, and that, but, um, you know, in my work with last, this, um, the, the, the allotment wasn't, I don't know if the allotment has ever been completed at the middle school or according, working with Bethany last year. So this is not, I knew it.
Oh, yeah. And I, I don't believe that it is, you know, it's not meant to focus on person, but it's meant to be an overall focus for.
Right. It's systemic and, you know, it is, it's resources, it's proactive reactive. Even the last year when I did, I, I, I carried some of the water last year, at least for the first part of the year. But I, I do believe of that, that all the decisions we made on, on all contractual decisions we made were made with the knowledge of performance and comfort. I wouldn't have put a name and nomination for me without being comfortable with the nomination of the team. That doesn't mean there's not, there's not work to do. But you know, and, and when we have, and Mike and have global conversations about whether the priorities are to how to move a district. I've been pretty clear. It's literacy, it's educator effectiveness with growth, it's relationship with kids and it's instructional time. Those to me are the four areas that this, this place has an opportunity to be 1%. And that's where the time is and we have work to do. We have worked to educate our effectiveness. As Tom just alluded to, it's the first district that I've seen and most of the team around the table has seen that doesn't have at least some component of regular summative evaluations of the performance in total. I've never, when I walked into this district, I'd never seen that before, both as a teacher and as administrator and team. So there's work to do there. Um, we need to increase the link between professional development and, uh, the evaluation. That's critically important for efficiency and critically important. So we're all clear on goals. I'm really very, very much want to differentiate the educator effectiveness from probationary all the way to very veteran teacher. To allow for administrators to put their time where it's most needed to grow and support teachers. I, um, have been very, uh, I've enjoyed, uh, very confident in that we have the right people in place to do the right work to move this place in a positive way. But, um, next year, when, um, you know, whatever role I have next year as Mike, I serve with the pleasure of Mike. The, the resources that we put into educator valuation K-12 are not insignificant. But it's also, it's fully transparent. Chris and I talked about this. I, we're, we're very, you know, we were, we view priorities and view what's going on. Very, very, uh, privileged to work with that team and trying to get this stuff done. And, um, the Kathleen and Anna and Allison, um, very complimentary and, 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 and very, very impressed by their commitment to it. As they've had, they've done that work early on. Any other comments on the consent agenda? Shannon?
Just two quick things. Um, I read about, um, the Spelling Bee, um, runner up in the union leader. And then I saw in packet, it's really exciting to have, um, this student representing AMS. So kudos to him and I hope that we're, you know, sharing and highlighting and celebrating that wherever we can, um, with, with the community. And the National Junior Honor Society induction, um, how many students do you know? Cause it looked like a big number and I'm just, again, something else that I just want to make sure we're highlighting and celebrating, you know, appropriately.
I don't have the number off the end right now.
Okay, great. But it was a big, it looked like I was at the ceremony. It looked like, it looked like a good, large sized group. So, um, I think we're, we're doing well with the students.
You know, as possible, as possible, we nominated, um, several students and not every student wanted to go through the process of applying. And, um, those who did, I, I think I saw a lot of students from, you know, with, with high academic achievement, um, which obviously is a piece of that. But I saw, you know, I saw our, a lot of our leaders and our athletes and our students who are involved in various clubs. And, um, our students who, you know, I've, I've just observed do positive things within the building. So, um, that was really nice to see and it was, I think it was heartwarming and, and a great opportunity to celebrate that.
Thank you.
To piggyback on that, um, what is, what is the plan moving forward with NJHS? Is at some point, I think several years ago, it was a seventh and eighth grade mission or group or I don't know.
Model, model. Thank you.
So I know that the grades, uh, I believe the grades from seventh grade go into the, the nomination for eighth grade. And typically what I've heard from the past, and I know COVID has gotten in the way here a little bit. But it was, it took place more in the fall, early winter of seven, of eighth grade so that they had more time to be able to do the work. This group has really kind of gotten on board and done a lot when it comes to, they've already divided into committees. I have a group meeting with me because they want to do a 5K road race. There's another group planning a mural. There's, there's several different groups and they are on a roll already, even though we only have, you know, seven to eight weeks left of their eighth grade year. So that is to be commended, but I, I would imagine that there would be much more happening, um, if we were able to get the process done earlier in the year. Um, another little stumbling block we had is because we were trying to figure out just institutionally, like institutional knowledge wise, like which, which, which of the grades counted? Did this elective's grades count or what was the threshold for being able to count to, to be able to figure out, um, who was nominated? And, um, I would always go with casting a bit of a wider net and making sure that, um, we're able to, uh, honor all students who are showing that, that academic achievement. So we were trying to, we were kind of going back and forth about what's been done in the past versus what we want to do now and that whole piece. And that may have slowed us down a little bit earlier in the year. But the goal is to be able to do it earlier so that the, the students are more established and are able to carry out some of the plans that they have. I'm happy to look into whether, um, it's something that we can start earlier as well. I just know that that's kind of what's been done in the past.
Yeah, I think, I think COVID threw it off. I think my, my recollection is that it was seventh grade, the timeline you mentioned. And so I guess my other just final thought on NJHS and the middle school is, you know, do the, do the students coming up to whatever grade it shakes out to be for the timeline? How do the younger students coming up know what they need to be working towards to aspire to? Because I think that's really important.
Yeah.
Um, and I, and again, as much as celebrating it, but how are we communicating with those younger students? So I don't necessarily need an answer right now, but that, that's something that I just want to make certain is a piece of, of what you guys talk about when you're fleshing out the timeline and the requirements and, and all of that is not only communicating with the students, but how do families find that information as well? Cause it was, you know,
Yeah.
A little truncated with, with COVID and everything.
And I was new to it too. It's not something I've, I've, we've, I've done in a school before. Um, it was new to me. Um, and so I think next year we'll just have more information going forward.
Great.
I appreciate that.
Okay. Seeing other comments, I will, oh, sorry, Terry, one last one.
You gave me too long to sit here with it. Um, I just wanted to thank the, our resource officers and their presentation that they gave on, um, internet crimes against children to parents. And I was really happy to see that some of it got extended to the kids as well, to students in age.
The plan is, it has not yet, but in talking on our, uh, my SEL team, we talked about, they wouldn't necessarily be getting that type of presentation. But to have Officer Sarah visit health classes and be able to, um, communicate some of that inter safe, internet safety information, um, at, at an age appropriate way makes sense. But to have the ICAT guys come is probably not the best.
No, no, it's a little bit scary.
Yeah, yeah. But any, we think, yeah, we think it could be five to eight. There's different ways to craft it so that it's age appropriate. I will say that we would probably in the future, uh, I gotta find other ways to, to advertise because we had four people show up. Which is a little higher than, I think they had one at South Heagan. So I would like, I think it's really, really important information. I know it's a busy time of year. People were like, I could go, I can't go. I've got this sport. I've got that sport. I've got to drive people everywhere. So thinking about other ways that we can, um, whoop in community members to be able to learn.
That was my next question actually. And one of the reasons beyond the fact that I was happy to see it on the calendar. I know that it was on my calendar too, and then I had something conflicted. And so I wondered if there was a recording or if there was a page or there was a way that parents can still get this information.
Yeah.
Even if it was recording, it being presented somewhere else. And then we give a link to that, you know, to the YouTube. I think that it's such an important topic and it changes all the time.
Yeah.
Right? So I do know that in the past, we've had pretty good attendance for the internet safety. And I think that it, it was just a Right, so I do know that in the past, we've had pretty good attendance for the internet safety and I think that it it was just a victim of timing.
Yeah, yeah.
So maybe if we can find other ways to share this information, because I do think that um. Since the guidance changes, parents, it's a, it's an ongoing topic that's important for them to know about.
Sure, and the the um, team at ICAC was very willing, they said, we'll come back, we don't care how many people we present to, we'll come back anytime. Um, they also have a dog that sniffs electronics, um, and sometimes that dog makes an appearance, which is kind of.
Oh man, if you said there was going to be a dog, you'd get double the people right there.
Yeah, kind of a cool thing, um, but I think, I think he mentioned the fact that that dog has um, like basically assisted in two hundred and seventy-five different searches and found something in all two hundred and seventy-five searches. I thought that was a pretty impressive number.
Wow.
So.
Talk about results, that's it.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, yeah, I, any, any help we can give too to try and try and get the word out and. But I, if we do have another one, I would love to have a way that we make it available, even if it's just a Zoom link or whatever.
Sure.
Um, just so parents can feel like they can get to that information.
Yeah, and to be, to be completely honest, I really wanted to, and and even just going forward next year, really wanted to find more ways to do parent partnership. Um, when it comes to to stuff like that, I've had a lot of talks with my guidance and SEL team about that. Um, about bringing people in and and even a model I've used in the past was um, my guidance team would have like, like breakfast with guidance and we had sometimes ten or twelve parents come in for whatever the topic was. And sometime, it was during the day, but then there would be options at night too, so I would like to do more of those parent partnership things. Um, it just didn't happen this year, but it's something to work on. Yeah.
All right, so let's put this up for a vote to accept the consent consent agenda as presented and discussed tonight. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, none opposed. Uh, so moving on, other than facilities, are there any subcommittee updates that a board member would like to give? I know facilities is our big one at this point. We'll have more as we go through the the summer and the fall, but um, with that, we'll, we'll skip over that one and we'll turn it over to Steve and Christine for our grant program assurances.
Sure, so um, this is a requirement of the federal grant program. Um, that the US, that New Hampshire ED, it's not DOE anymore, it's New Hampshire ED, um, is the path through agent, so the money comes from the federal government in New Hampshire ED. And they distribute it through the grant management system. And uh, we have to record, in in my time as soup, it's gone from just the superintendent signing to the board chair and the superintendent, send it as board chair and soup signing. And now it's gone back to just the superintendent signing, but we have to um, by regulation, uh, notice the board about the assurances. So what the assurances are, is the strings, right? It's the strings that are attached to federal dollars. Um, it is our commitment to assure that we are implementing um, the title funds, the federal dollars with efficacy, with fidelity as intended. Um, it's, uh, if you, if you read them, it's about equity, it's about communication. Um, Christine, Amy, Katie. Um, building principles get involved, we all work together. Um, Christine is a lead on all the titles, um, and then um, last year I helped a little bit more, I didn't. Much this year with much of anything, but she's done that, and then IDEA, of course, is Megan, her team. Um, but what we're doing now is presenting the assurances to the Amherst School Board, it will be noted in the minutes. And then I will sign the assurances and we will load those up and email them. They have to be provided to New Hampshire ED in two avenues or two methods. And then we will, then we can continue with the grant program. Um, one of the, one of the, uh, there's a lot of complexities coming S A U thirty-nine. I was in a little district where we would have um, one set of grants, um. Christine, once you was on, what's the number of times that those? So it's possible to manage eighty-four different grants, because you do multiple years, obviously multiple districts, including Esther and all that fun stuff, so. Um, a lot of expertise in Christine and Katie and Amy. Um, we work really hard, very collaborative, uh, we do work. Um, you know, with the buildings to support their initiatives as well, like Title Two A is a lot of professional development, which is a lot of fun. Um, Title One is is support for, you know, extended school, while it's not extended additional time in the summer. IDEA, of course, we go through the process, so this is simply the requirement to notice. Um, and we have done that and go in the minutes and then I'll happily sign with my credential and it'll be good to go.
Any questions for Steve or Christine? Okay, with that, thank you for.
Sorry, I was trying to turn the microphone on, so you think, so I. I get, I know it's just like a formality, the assurance process, so I just have a couple of questions just to make sure that I'm understanding sort of the board's role in um. Reviewing these with you all tonight, so I assume, and you know, don't let me assume something, but that these assurances are pretty boilerplate.
Yes, we've, we've, we've done them and we, if there are any changes to these charts, and there have been.
Yeah.
Some, um, there was a change that we had to develop a a a change in grant policy, um, you know, so that was a piece, but when they are, they're well noticed. Um, but yes, the this year there is not significant changes in the assurances.
So there's, there's nothing, you know, so not getting our our budget met two years in a row, so some of these things require some work on our part, right? So if we take this grant money, we have to provide certain things.
Correct.
Um, so for example, increased parent and family engagement, that's a, something that we're, yeah, to per Title One, so how, what does that look like? I'm just curious, what does that look like on our end?
So we notice and then we have uh, events, we have public information sessions with Title One and we communicate and we send home a lot of information.
To the pool of students who qualify. Which leads me to my next question, do we have any sense of, like, what's a typical percentage of students that qualify for Title One? Do we know? Uh, and you may not know that, I'm sorry, I should have probably, like.
Oh, no, please.
I don't know if that's, I should have asked ahead of time.
Um, so the way Title One works, it's a little complicated. We are required to um, set what our criteria is, so we as a school um, and district actually can determine our own criteria for what students qualify for Title One. Once we set that criteria, that criteria must rank order every single student in the entire school or district. And then once we've rank ordered, we look at our funding and then we determine which students we can service based on that funding. The students that are then identified um, through that um, that process, they then become our Title One students. So every year, that number varies, so I know that can be really frustrating for families. Some years, wait, I got the Title One letter last year, but I didn't get this year, but my kid's not doing any better. And and that is very frustrating, because unfortunately, it all comes down to how much funding we get and our funding. Um, we've been as low as thirty thousand in Amherst and as high as this year, I think is our highest, I think we're at like sixty-four, plus we got rollover money. Um, sixty-four thousand, so it's a pretty, it's, it's significant um, changes and we use that entire grant for summer programming and additional, basically more instructional time for those students. Um, so uh, with that, it varies. Um, we've just finished identifying our students at Clark Wilkins and those. Letters are probably going out soon, we're still just finalizing and um, really making sure, because teacher recommendation is part of the process and I think that's an important piece. For it, so we're still finalizing teacher recommendation, um, and meeting with teachers at AMS, but those letters should be going out soon.
So when the criteria is established, so that's established annually at the S A level with the administrators.
Correct.
Okay, um, does that criteria target areas that we're broadly focusing on, right? Like, I know that the board has had a literacy.
Mm-hmm.
Push, I I just have to ask.
Yeah, no, it's a really good question.
That I've been watching, so does that tie together?
So schools can actually determine, they can say our greatest need is in literacy, we're all set in math, we're only going to service students in literacy using our Title One funds. Every year we've looked at it and we felt that we've had students with needs in both areas. Um, but certainly as we continue down our journey and, you know, we're kind of transitioning from deep focus math K five, really looking at that six-eight math. And then also really looking at that literacy piece, so as we transition and look at how our students are doing. And where our needs are, we really should be designing our Title One program based on student need and also those, again, those big picture goals. Um, so yes, that that can change every year. Um, we have done both because we've seen the need for both. But some years we've actually said, we want to double the number of math teachers we have and we're going to double the service, the math service, because we have more students with need. Where we'll have less literacy or vice versa, so that has flexed with the um, you know, how how our staffing um, for the support and and where our students are getting support. So, answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm happy to chat at any point more deeply.
Yeah, I'm sure I will have more questions in the future. Actually, I do have one other question. Um, so sticking with Title One, A fourteen. Publicly disseminate annual LEA and school report cards. Uh, is, is that different, that sounds, the description sounds different to me than like a report card. So what does that look like in S A U thirty-nine?
So we're required on our website to have a link to the Department of Education's school report card.
Okay.
That's what that is, and we do have that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That was a good question.
All right, uh, moving on to our next agenda item, so this uh, will be our election recap portion of the uh, night tonight, so we'll talk about unsigned fund ba, excuse me, we'll start off with default budget. Talk about the unsigned fund balance, uh, how we're looking for next year, and then we'll get into our facilities conversation. I will say facilities is really only going to focus on the here and now at this point, the board will have to um, determine what we're going to do in terms of meetings to lay out plans for next year. I don't think that's uh, going to happen tonight, uh, and I don't think we're, we're ready for that yet, but. Uh, more community involvement clearly and and resetting our plans and looking at a variety of different options, so. I will start off with the default budget preparation, uh, as was mentioned earlier, the proposed budget did not pass on election day. Uh, by a couple of hundred votes, we had to get to fifty percent with that or fifty percent plus one, so we are in default for the second consecutive year. Uh, and Amy has some information as to what the initial preparations look like to make sure that we can cut off roughly one point four percent?
Four hundred thousand.
Four hundred thousand, so. Um, so a little, it's a little over one percent, right, from the default to the um, proposed, so. Uh, looking at how we're going to get down to that number to be able to meet the default guidelines for next year, so I will turn it over to you, Amy.
Well, I'll start.
Oh, sorry, Steve.
No, no worries, and then it'll go to Amy, so just, just a little bit where we are, so um. The things that I've learned and 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 one of the things I've been really um, privileged and and enjoyed this year is learning, I I did annual school district meeting. Um, for my career until um, here with SB two and the default process. So during the entire budget development process, um. Amy led the calculation of the default and it's important to to remember, and it is for me at least, that the default is really. Misnamed when you call the default budget, because it really is the default number. We cannot adopt the default. Budget process because there's certain things in there that are, that are required to deliver public school education. That are not in the default by statute, like um, the transportation increase, like health insurance costs for non-union. Like um, salary increases unless we're going to have people go back, salary increases, so. The default number is strong, but the expectation is that we formulate uh, an actual budget based on the default number. So how does it work? Well, we had the proposed budget and so what Amy, Katie, leadership team. Um, worked on was going from the proposed budget to the default number, which is finding four hundred and two thousand dollars. So we had to reduce the proposed budget by four hundred and two dollars to give us the amount. That uh, we have available to fund the public schools in Amherst School District next year, so just again, the proposed minus four hundred and two. So uh, what does that look like? And and, you know, last year, uh, we were fortunate, we had some relief. From the actual health insurance to the guaranteed maximum health insurance, and this year our actual um, was equal to the guaranteed maximum, so there was not any piece there. Now, just a couple of interesting things in the last week, uh, first of all, one of the struggles with this. And uh, it is what it is, but the FY twenty-four budget process continues, right? It is not done. It won't be done at this meeting. And because of now the default in the iteration, and so even more time is our spent on the money side of this as opposed to the learning side of this, but that's where we are. But it's a little bit of Groundhog Day, right? We're just continually going through it, and we started FY twenty-four a long time ago and we're going through. Uh, uh, another piece that is fascinating to me and what I learned this week, and I've had to remember, when we deal with the, when we deal with FY twenty-four based on statute. The special education budget really is actual. Right, those, those increases and what happened, and this is where, you know, I don't know how many people watch the video, but there's an incredible amount of character and integrity sitting next to me. As well as in this team. Because during the budget process, working with Kristen, working with Christine, working with how, you know, what are the priorities, as you know, Shane just talked about literacy. We, in the budget process, reduced two pair of professionals and reallocated that to a reading position. We talked about that, right? It was very public and we talked about that, and even during the budget process, we said that it, we want to give Kristen time to look at this, it might be a reading position, it might be a special education position. But because the der, the, the derivation of that, where it came from was reading, we chose. Not to put that reading, we put it in reading, if we put it in special ed, it would have been in the default. But because it was reading, it was literacy focused, that's where we were in the development, so we took two special education positions, cast them in for a regular ed that wasn't in the default. So when we reduce those two positions, because special ed is actual, they are not in the default. And that's, so what, look, I'm, I'm, what, what Amy would never do, and the team wouldn't do, and I wouldn't do, is pad the default, said, oh, let's make them all freaking special ed positions. Throw them in the default, and if we get a default, fine. And, but we lost two positions because the, uh, special ed is actual, like I, I'll be honest, I went to Amy and said, hey, so where are those positions? Because in FY twenty-two, they were there. Because we're at FY twenty-two chicken nugget, right? And we, I've talked about that for, and I go, where are those? They gotta be there, they were employed then, but because they were special ed positions, that's actual budgeting, so we lost those two positions, so it's, so it's very interesting. Um, and we would never do it, and Amy would never do it, because we want to be, the most important thing is we're transparent and we communicate with this community and the priority with literacy, even though. What, because of the pool and and what is, we may move that to a special ed position because of of the pool and hiring, but it's not in the default. You with me? It's just an interesting nuance in how, how transparent we were and and how much that, you know, that we said we are going to be honest with the Amherst community about this budget. Um, and I appreciate that, and I've learned a lot about that. Um, so um, I'm going to, so. Immediately, we went to what are the priorities and um, and Mike was involved in this, because obviously he's, he's in July, you know, July one stuff. The leadership team is involved, this, we've had lots of this discussions. Because what we had, and we had over, and I've said it a few times and Tom's probably tired of this, we've had over four thousand hours of additional literacy support in the budget that was a priority to support, so. The priority looking, one of the things is class size at early elementary, right? Research-based, early class size, early elementary. Because that was a regular ed position, that is not in the default, and that's fine, that makes perfect sense. So remember now, we are at FY twenty, FY twenty-two, right? That was the budget that we're running from past. And what Kathleen and Bethany and last year and Kristen this year has done is we have high, we've had attrition and we've had some change in staff. But those salaries are locked in at the FY twenty-two level, you with me? And so if you retire in FY twenty-two at. Let's say master step fourteen, we were able to hire bachelors four. But the value of the master step fourteen is still in the default, that's by statute, that's not padding, that's statute. That is the law, because that is the last approved budget. And Amy, throughout the ways and means process, researched and got legal opinions a few times on that question. But that's pretty much standard in New Hampshire, you go by that piece. So um, there is, because of the staffing changes from twenty-two to present, and we, and we reported this, right, and we did a good job in hiring. Um, you know, hire, and that's typical, right? You replace a masters fourteen with something less, because you typically, and we've done that, so. Uh, so where are some cost savings in the four hundred and two? You with me? One of the things that we're, that we are proposing and recommending is we lock in fifteen bus routes. So in FY twenty-two budget, it was budgeted for seventeen bus routes, you with me? But from, from FY twenty-two to FY twenty-four is a significant increase in fuel costs, makes sense, right? We've had, right, everybody knows that the price per gallon's gone up last couple of years. So we have two choices, we either, we, we buy seventeen bus routes. Which we haven't done this entire, and I don't love this, by the way, because I love instructional time, and with fifteen bus routes, we have bus ten? There's, I always get that, there is a, there, is it eight?
I know, it's ten.
All right, sorry, there is a bus that shows up, and if we had a sixteenth bus, like. Next year in the budget, Amy and I'll talk about this, or Mike and Amy will talk about this, or whoever it is, but we'll probably look at the right size buses where we're on student population, it's probably sixteen. To completely, sixteen would do it, um, because we know if we hit bus ten, if we had sixteen, we divide and we get those kids about five, seven minutes earlier. But it's, it's about a hundred grand of the four hundred that we save by locking in fifteen, that's a teacher. And so if it's, and 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 I don't love this, but these, I don't love any of this, but this is where we're at, so. By locking in fifteen buses and informing the the bus, we stay at the present level of service that we've done this year and we reduce the four hundred and ten to three hundred and ten, I'm three hundred and two. You picking up, you with me so far? So the other piece of this is um, there is, there's a bucket, right, of increased staff. there is, there's a bucket, right, of increased staff. And that's where, so the, the person at the, the reading specialist slash special educator is still in minus of 42 because we had the staffing bucket to support that. Now, but the priority is, but we know, and talking with Kristen, talking with Mike, talking with Amy, talking with Christine, talking with Kathleen, not getting all this stuff, that right now, what is proposed is not the kindergarten position. Why? Because the philosophy is, and how you do this, is you budget what you know. What we know today, today, 98, 99? 99. So we have right now registered 99 kindergarten. And, and she's going to check twice a day, and that's what we do. And I'm with you. I'm in your back pocket. I did that for a living too. So, but today, on April 11th, we, we budget what you know, because if it stayed at 99, we do not need that seventh teacher. You with me? But there's also 39 name, 39 students that are unaccounted for yet in the registration from the town census. And we, even if we did, like some of those moved out, maybe some of those are homeschools, some of those are going to the Steve Chamberlain, I'm just kidding, going to another school. But some of those will come and be wonderful at Clark School, Clark Wilkins Little School. But we don't have that number yet. But if we get a third of those as 13, 13 plus 99 is, right, 1 on 12, which is where we want, so in the budget process with this community, we talked about adding another teacher at 106. At 106. Now, for me, it is, when does that 106 happen? I think it's going to happen within two weeks because one thing that Kathleen's doing and Christine, we're all trying, because this matters to us, is we are contacting all the names and addresses of those 39 youngsters, and they're, and next week, they're all going to call, and Kathleen's going to come and say, Steve, we now have 17 more kids. And then I'm going to call Tom and just say, yep, when we're going to propose hiring the positions, what we do. You with me? But today, you budget what you know. But we have, so it, it, so when we look at this this year, and as a, as a preschool through eight problem, this isn't a Clark Wilkins, we don't cut Clark Wilkins or one, we don't cut, you know what I mean? This is a district-wide, we look at this district-wide. So there is, we have attrition at Amherst Middle School. And so right now, we have slotted not to fill yet an FTE in case the kindergarten pops to plus 106. Now, if Kathleen called me August 31st and said, Steve, we're at 106, then we're pretty sure it's not going to go much beyond 106. You with me? So if it's August 31st, we don't pull it. But if it's, if it's a May, no, it's April 19th, it's going to grow from April 19th, you with me? To, and one of the things that this is, I, I, this is a very much part of my life in kindergarten estimation, because projections, and we had this, no matter how much you love NASDAQ, no much, how much you love any population or enrollment and projection, kindergarten is the wild card. Because you don't have the year before. You with me? So I'd love a 106 projection. I feel, I feel, actually, we're going to go past 106 with 39 unaccounted for, and we're at 99. It's not, we're not going to go for 39. That doesn't make any sense to me. But it is the time. And so what I, what we are now is under more pressure for staffing. There's more teacher choice, candidate teacher choice than in history of New Hampshire Public Ed. So, and, and very appropriately, her due diligence and Kristen's too, and everybody, we have posted anticipated because, to collect the apps and be ready to roll, assuming that March is going to be a good day, and you know, it is what it is. So we are monitoring very closely, we're reaching out to all, and we have allocated a position to transfer the FTE to support the priority, Mike's priority, Christine's, Amy's, everybody's priority, including Kristen. Because obviously, you know, we, it, it happens there too. So we'll be, we are, so we are saving a position at this point to, you know, to pull the kindergarten once it hits 106 early. If it's 106 late, it's not going to, but if it hit 106 late, it's not as urgent because you don't have that time to grow. You know, 106 to 107 as opposed to 106 to 125. This year was what, 120? 123. So that's the mechanics, and Amy can go through and go through where she found it, but it's iterative. This is, we're not, we won't be done with FY24 for a while. And we're also looking at, you know, more staffing costs and things like that. That makes sense.
It does. Can I ask? I don't know.
Please.
Okay. So it feels early to have a kindergarten number locked up anyway, right? Like, this is early. I, I feel like in past meetings that I've watched, it's like June, the June surprise, right? Where all of a sudden, it's like, what? We just.
And that's the culture that has to change.
Right.
Because we need, and we, we, we talked, we need to push kindergarten registration earlier than it's ever been because staffing depends on the staffing competition is more than it's ever been. Like, if we had 110 right now, I'd be coming to the board and said, pull it. So we, the process for kindergarten registration, I think, has to be much earlier nowadays because it's A, we don't know, and B, there's more pressure on budgets, and C, there's more pressure on staff. I used to hire really good kindergarten opportunities in August. So we're going to do it earlier.
So I just want to make sure I was with you when you were talking. The FTE that you're holding is currently at the middle?
Yeah, we'll talk about it non-public.
Okay. Got it. Thanks.
That's okay. Because it is connected to people. It's all connected to, it's all connected to people. So that's why it's, we can go in and talk.
So I, I have some, sorry, Terry, I have some questions on here, and, and as I go through this, I'm I can't, what is it? I can be sold on the changes that we're looking at, but I have some concerns that this goes back to kindergarten in 2014, 2015, where something was voted down and we did it the next year anyway. So I have concerns, and it's not a perfect correlation on this. I realize we have a default budget, it's calculations, we have savings, significant savings in some instances from other departments here. I have concerns, though, that things that we proposed that were voted down are being put back into this budget anyway. So I'm not comfortable with 106, but we can, we can talk about that depending on when it hits, if it's a certain point. Because you're at 106, you're at 16 per classroom, and you have two professionals in the classroom with a full-time kindergarten para and a full-time teacher. To me, I think 120 is going to be more along the lines of a number because at six teachers and at 120, you're still, you're at 20 or at 126 with seven teachers, you're at 18 students per classroom, and it's still a nine to one ratio. My bigger concerns come in non, non-personnel for technology. That looks like the fifth grade computers are still in there. And I know that Ways and Means and the board both expressed concern that those should be in there. But again, something that was, was voted down as part of the proposed budget. I'm concerned that the non-union salary benefit pool went from 31 to 50 from the proposed to what is recommended here. And then there are probably some other ones that I'm looking at as well. Quickly, Amy, the AM, the administration AMS personnel for 1.3 million, what is that? What does that cover again? Is that, it's not just principals, correct?
So, no.
I didn't think so. I was like, geez. Because I know the AMS personnel is going to be staffing, there's going to be teachers and everything.
Yeah. No, no, no. That's the, that's teacher salary.
No, but for AMS personnel under administration?
Oh, under administration.
Oh, no, there we go. And our curriculum is, so what is curriculum AMS personnel? Those are teachers. And under administration, AMS personnel is?
That is.
I know, I, I'm sure it's in there. I'm just drawing a blank and what it's.
Guidance.
Okay.
Admin. Actually, summer school.
So those don't go into the personnel category even though they're part of the same collective bargaining unit?
No, it's just, this is all by account code.
That's, that's fun.
Yeah.
Okay. So that, that, those are my overall concerns. And we have a couple of months to figure this out, but I, I want this, I, I hope that we're careful in, in what we're putting back in and cognizant about it because it's, I think that can lead us into some sticky situations and public response. So. So not that they're not important, but, and not that it's not legal to do it. It's just that it's
So right now, what's not funded is that classroom teacher, that kindergarten teacher. The kindergarten para is not funded.
So those aren't in these calculations at all then? Okay.
The new custodian at Clark Wilkins is not in there, the SNA's fellows, the buses are funded at 15, not 17. The 5% wage adjustment facility staff is not funded. So things that were funded, the LPN, Steve recommended that we fund that at half. The reading specialist is funded, and the library associate, associate is funded. The non-union salaries at 3% are funded. The reason you see the big jump is because it wasn't just the 3% pool, it was actually having to fund what was put into the working budget for FY23.
Okay, gotcha.
That's why it's double.
And that's why I wanted to ask the question, so.
Putting it back.
Yeah, it's tough to go back to.
Required items such as phone utilities, we did keep facility maintenance at the proposed level that Roger had with the exception for the custodial, custodian. We cut responsive classroom, which you can ask Christine more about that. We trimmed summer school, and we trimmed a teacher PD line called Strategic Advancement. So.
The computers are in there though.
As a library assistant.
Yep.
Right. And those are really because we have those savings in wages. Because we made the determination in the, the proposed budget to budget salaries at a master seven as opposed to what was what was in the FY22 budget. Now, that being said, there's a bit of a risk to that. We budgeted at master seven plus family. So potentially you have, what's in the FY22, you could have a retiring teacher who's at the top of the salary scale, but maybe a lower health insurance amount. So, you know, it's really a balance. And then, you know, from a hiring standpoint, we, we may have some challenges being able to hire at that level. We may have to hire at a higher level. So but what will go in, what will become our working budget will be actual salaries and benefits. And just one final note, as Steve said, this is really a, a living document. And anytime we, we need to make a change from, first of all, we would want the board to feel comfortable with any, any recommended default. But any, anytime we have to make a change from one function code to another, it needs to be approved by the board.
All right. I feel better about that now. Thank you.
Yep.
The, like Kathleen and I had a discussion yesterday before the days kind of go together. We really do, it is do no harm, and it is to stay within our means to do what's best for kids. And to be transparent with the community, understand why the decision that we made. Like there were, and I don't, I mean, that's how I've always operated in, in all, you know, that's, that's been the constant. Well, you know, I was never one to say, oh, let's propose we're going to cut all high school sports just to get everybody out because they're not going to go. You do what's real, and you do, and you don't try to inflict, you're trying to mitigate and do what's best. This is not a pain-free process. We are structurally going to have kids late to school. We, you know, we will lose, we're going to lose a position at Amherst Middle School. If, you know, if it pops. We, you know, there was a question, you know, and the library assistant, yes, but with library assistants, sustain through, right? If we have lots of enrollment, you know what I mean? So this is where we are today, and this is what we're monitoring. The reasons why the computers are, the, the laptops are in is because we, we also reduced a significant area of that to put in that area. So we need to, we need to shore up that area or we'll lose all efficacy and ability to do it, and that was a priority. So this is not pain-free, but it does stay within our means and priority was best for kids.
So I was going to ask, kind of along those lines, and I'm sure that, you know, when you're making these choices, that's what's going into it. Can you explain to me, I, I'm having a little bit of a hard time letting go of those reading fellows, and maybe the ship has already sailed and, and doesn't matter anyway. But if we're talking about the, the need for early education literacy, what we can't, how, what we can't move around, that's a lot of hours with a lot of people, a lot of impact to student learning. I look, I, I will come out and say, I tend to be the person who says, we do cut sports, we do cut transportation to games in an effort to get more literacy instruction for our students.
And, and we have cut, and can we go further to find it? Sure. Based on, you know, what we can sustain and where we could project. You know, and we'll try to come back and do that next year. It's expanding a program, which I love. But it felt that, you know, trying to get to the 402, you know, that went as opposed to others. Is there, is there $50,000 in other areas that doesn't impact significantly the student experience? We can go back at it. But that was the, that was the thought. I don't think there's 50, like, there's not 50 grand in clubs and, and fall transportation for those. You know what I mean? And I thought we did pretty well. But, but this is great. This is feedback. This is what we want. And I love it. I love, I love that. Victoria, that we're trying to, you know, be resilient and be persistent.
It's hard choices, right? I mean, that's, that's where we are. And I think sometimes this board gets, you know, discussed publicly for not talking about these hard choices. And while, I'll, I'll be the one to say that while I think collectively the board in the past has believed that our administration is going through all these thought processes, I think sometimes not discussing them at these board meetings is a detriment to not only our administrators, but also our board. So take it respectfully that I'm asking, please, but you know, this is why.
You know, somebody comes to the board, it gets better. You know, we're pretty into it. We have lots of conversation, but sometimes I can be too close to it too. So this is good. This is what we want. And it's not a today thing. I mean, except maybe the fellows may disappear. You know what I mean? Because they, they have to find a job. I will find a placement, you know what I mean? Sorry, placement. And I, I want to reiterate what, you know, I had, what Amy said, and, and Christine can chuckle because Christine, very appropriately, I had a lot of aggression, very aggressive master seven on new hires. Felt really good about it. And then all of a sudden, it's the most challenging hiring in 35, wow, I've only been district leader for like 20, I mean, and principal leader. So sometimes I get a little gun shy, like, uh-oh, you know, uh-oh. And that's why one of the things, this is, like, one of the experiences that I had in, in my, we had a young, high-quality chemistry teacher, like masters two, that's gold. That, that person go anywhere you want, and if there was a riff, if we lost that position, it would have cost me 50 grand more because you don't hire a masters two camp. You hire a masters 15, which means you also have a full family. I had a single masters two camp. And that drove everything because I couldn't touch the science department because he was first one gone. And the replacement would have been 50 grand more. Like, what, I appreciate how long you wait. But it could be the difference between hiring a fresh year out of college or a August masters 10th, the only one we've got, and I got to go to Amy. And I said, we're going to be 40 over this. And everybody said, I told you, Steve, we shouldn't have done it. We shouldn't have done it. They have the giant, I told you so, which I live with a lot in the SAU. And that's the timing. That's why I would love it to pop because right now is the season for early college grads. Because they are going to be, they're, they're going to have, they have choices today. And we are a very attractive culture, climate, educational leader, people who press the flesh and work and mentoring program. So we have some structures in place that other schools don't. And so, but they have choices right now. And I told you, I've said this a few times, it's true. I got offered a math job. Me. I'm like crazy old and top scale, and said, Steve, come and teach math and coach basketball. And if someone's going to offer me that job, they would do anything for a BA degree. So that's the stress and anxiety. That's the agita that I've got to live with, that if, if we wait six weeks, we get to the number that we want, and we had a $40,000 shift in hire. Which matters when you're on the default. That's the agita. Unlike five years ago that we had 100, 100 apps. You know, now we have less than that. Let's just say less than that. I, but that's the agita. That's the math problem that we're trying to figure out. But I can't, and Kathleen knows this, I can't say we're going to pull the trigger. Now we get 99 kids. But she's doing everything we can to get that number as high as we can, as early as we can. Because I don't want people sitting at home, if you're watching this video, register for kindergarten. Because it matters. I used to do that all the time. And so like, we used to put signs up and I said, hey, everybody, register for kindergarten.
And just to add, we do spend a lot of time putting together some, some documents for the principals so that they know where they are with budget in terms of hiring. And certainly you want to get the best person, but it has to be within a certain range. So, you know, we work hard at the SAU to provide that information for them and keep an eye really sort of globally, okay, where are we with our hiring budget? So we stay with it.
They do a good job.
Yeah. And I, you know, I Yeah, and I, you know, I freak out when I see, you know, a an expensive hire, but hopefully that's balanced, you know, with the less expensive.
And I think it's gonna be okay.
I know.
So I appreciate all the explanation, thank you. And I appreciate having something in hand to compare side by side. I actually appreciate that technology wasn't the first one on the cutting block because it so often is, but then we get ourselves in a hole. And I think that it's an easy cut because it can be a big number, but I I don't think it should always be the first knee jerk. So thank you for not doing that. Even though we're not done discussing it, it may still end up on the cutting block. My question is the fellows, if we say right now that we're not going to go through with that, can, do we have time to still change our minds? Because that felt like that was such a value. And did you say that we're not doing that, but we are keeping a library assistant?
Yep.
Because I'll make that swap, I'll take two very good people who may stay later over one person that I may be able to engage some retired people in the community and some volunteers to help. It won't be as good, but it could be good enough for a year that we're on a default budget.
No, I get it. Um, I'm with you. So so there's all, there's a lot of pieces on the chessboard um, right now. So if we get to a hundred and twenty, then um, it would, that additional kindergarten class would come with additional pair. And the library assistant could be moved to that. So it's like a whole, well, hide library assistant now, but we have it allocated now. And depending on where we are in in early elementary popular enrollment, we can see, so if we spend that now on on um, fellows, I'm not, you know, we'd put a lot of stress on the budget if we get to a high number to have a second element, additional. So right now, it's allocated as a library as we are, but it could be shifted if the population goes up.
What if instead we said, hey, we know that again, technology is a big number that we can move. Let's hope we don't have to do make that shift. Say, hey, fellows, don't go interview, stay with us. We already know you love, you want to keep you. And then we see later if we still have money to do technology. Like, I'm I'm okay with letting, and as, and again, I am, I'm usually the one fighting to get those dollars. And I will be fighting to go get donations for all those people who've come up and said, hey, we've got people just willing to give us things, great, come. I will talk to you, I will take you to coffee, we will have a discussion, please. I would love to have more corporate partnerships. I would love to have community partnerships. I have been for them my entire time on this board and I still am for them. We drifted away from that a little bit during the COVID years, so I would love to get back to that. But in the meantime, I don't want to give up that kind of resource that I think is a very unique partnership that we can build and we can continue to get as we have fewer and fewer good candidates. I want to have good people that want to come, build a relationship with us and then build out our ranks that way. It seems like that's just really cutting off our nose. Quite our face.
I get it and happy to go back and look at, I'm concerned, remember the the um, the two to one in fifth grade um, also changed instruction. And it also allowed the repurposing of devices all the way through it. That was impacting um, that that would impact two hundred kids. Um, it turned a hundred and fifty in fifth, but I can go back and we can talk with Brian and see where we are if we take that out and our ability to sustain um, technology, which is, you know, very much needed in 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 day to day but also, you know, assessments and things. Um, the trickle effect of cash, if not the trickle up effect at this moment, I, Amy and I have to sit with Brian to see how much is there. Um, and just to put everything on the table in about, you know, two minutes, you're going to see an estimate of fund balance. You know, and so, you know, what happens is, is, you know, if there was an extra fifty thousand dollars in fund balance, you know, the board has the authority, right, to allocate fund balance to do things as well.
Which is another thought that I have for a way to try to fill that gap.
So there's a lot of pieces moving today, like, you're gonna see in a minute that the, and I think I wrote it about in board notes, right, one point three is necessary with one point one.
Is, is, is everybody good to, if we go to that portion now? Let's go there if we can. So.
No, it's all good. So, um, so the, and I wrote about it in board notes. So part, right, I love the, where fund balance comes in is the whole package of expense and revenue. Because, so this is tax rate, right? And and when you only talk about the expense side, um, that is on a, or that costs you to increase of the tax rate, revenue decreased the tax rate. So during the budget process this year, based on historical record, the estimate to for to reduce taxes was seven seventy five, was seven hundred seventy five thousand dollars. Um, and then, but there was also six O five to put away for uh, maintenance and the maintenance trust. So that is one, you know, ish. That's a one point three million and we're at one point one million as of, I think it's March thirty first?
Yep.
March thirty first. So April, May, and in in also the Amy digging in and early and often and pushing and pulling with with her department on trying to squeeze out and we met as a leadership team, cleaning encumbrances and doing everything we can to get this number as early as we can, so the board can make very, very important decisions about how we fund education in Amherst. Because if it does come out that we have one point five left over, the obligation is one point three. That means the board has the ability to do, make a decision on the two hundred K, which can be technology, it can't be personnel, you can't front load, oh, you can't front loan pay my salary or your portion of my, or that wouldn't work anyway. Yeah, we're, Kathleen, the assistant salary. And it's, but it, because it's where it is, there is less play, less delta because Amy's digging in with Katie and they're doing the work. So this isn't casual, this isn't, you know, this is clearing up, taking a look, meeting with high, you know, high expense departments and cleaning up some of this, it's not done and it is only March thirty first, we have a couple of months left, so I, but we're not at the one point three either. I think, pretty confident, I think I wrote about that, I feel good about getting to one point three. I don't necessarily feel great that we're gonna get one point six, one point seven. Because they've done all a good work, but I'm pretty good that's gonna grow to, and then, you know, and this is one of the things that I've always been frustrated as a systems leader, as a, as a district leader, is, you know, the community banging you or saying, oh, how could, you know, you don't budget well, you don't do that well, look, we're gonna analyze, we're gonna figure it. Some of this was also best because we were in default, so we've got the F Y twenty one bucket here too. You know what I mean? Because we were in default, because it's consecutive falls. But I always appreciate that whenever, if if there is some spending at the end of your fund, it is transparent. It is in public and the board makes that decision. It's not a free for all, walking down the halls and saying, hey, Steve, you need another car. You know what I mean? So, um, you know, that's, so that's where we're, and that's, you know, and we, and Amy and I both looked at the audit this year and the audit of the fund balance to find out what are the high areas, the professional learning and the the salaries and things. And we'll continually do this over time. And um, the estimate at seven seventy five, you know, that was a good, I mean, Amy, Amy and Katie did a really good job. Because if you end up returning a lot in fund balance, then you start in a tax rate hole next year because you gotta meet that minimum. You know what I'm saying? Like, if if we, it's the estimate for fund balance is seven seventy five, next year you gotta get seven seventy five. If you don't, the delta is your tax rate's going up. Um, so, but if you put a million in it and then you only get to eight hundred, then your tax rate went up to, you spent two hundred thousand dollars, you just lost in revenue. But, and one thing I love about Amherst, New Hampshire, two point three billion dollars worth of property, everybody, I love your tax rate. I'm all over it. That's because I live in a different part of town, less than two point three billion dollars worth of property. Um, but a lot of pieces to figure this out. But one thing that's a a good thing is we have allocated contracts, but we're in the hiring process and we'll talk about more, because we'll talk about more in non-public, about what positions and what people. But we, the the contracts that we allocated are all paper within the default budget. Does that help?
What month um, of the year do we usually like come back and say, this is the amount that we have? And these are the possible projects to fund?
So we'll come back um, next month and then June as well. And in June, we should be pretty tight. And we actually do have um, a list of potential projects to um, to present to folks, should we have available funds. And I know Steve has another um, potential project that he's gonna talk about as well, but we make the decision because we actually have to um, have a P O by the end of the fiscal year in order for us to be able to to fund uh, those projects.
It can be tech.
Yep.
Yep. So can we, do we um, have the opportunity to see the potential projects?
Yep.
In May?
Yep.
Like prior to June?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can share, actually, it's a share sheet, I can share it with you all now and you can see it and then we can discuss it in May.
And um, can I ask a quick question on the facilities that the budgeted, the proposed and the default personnel? And um, something I noticed in the cassette agenda and didn't have a chance to ask about contracting cleaning services?
Yeah.
Is that because? I think, is that right? And we're just not having any luck?
Correct.
And is that because we are not competitive enough and we?
Was why we had a five percent wage adjustment.
Okay.
In the proposed budget.
Right. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there's an H VAC position that also is, we've been, we have not been able to fill that um, position. And that's a a highly skilled position and it's, it's been challenging this year, so. Uh, most of the year, we had someone new and then it it didn't work out, so. Yeah, so Roger unfortunately has been having to do a lot of that work.
Anything else?
I'm sorry, I just, can I ask one more question on the buses?
Yeah.
So I heard you, Steve, say there's not enough fall like buses to sports and things that would, it's a drop in the bucket, basically. But I am curious, what is, do we have a sense for, like, outside of our getting kids to school in buses, a sense of what we're spending on transportation outside of that? I mean, if we're getting brass tacks and making choices between literacy and kids having to get driven to an event, which they they do in some cases because we've had some busing challenges a lot of this fall. I know there was a lot of parental carpooling and driving happening. I'm just curious what that number is.
The budget is about twenty five thousand for field trips slash co-curricular.
Okay, so that's for the field trips and that. And do we have a sense for what percentage of um, families take advantage of the buses, how full our buses are? Like, I know the fifteen, you know, we have this issue with them getting to school late, but are are they old? I mean.
I wrote them last, I wrote them last year, I wrote three or four last year, they were. I don't, I haven't seen many.
They're.
You know, it's hard, you catch it early in route, like you get calls, oh, early, what's early in the route. Um, but when I wrote them last year, they were just about, you know, right. And and the buses, one thing that I was, when I wrote them last year, they weren't, um, they were so much shorter than I was used to.
Shorter routes?
Yeah, just time on the bus. Like, I was used to an hour fifteen. These were all like forty five, the ones I wrote were like forty five.
We try to keep them um, at an hour or less.
Yeah, you did it, you did a good job, even with fifteen, I think. But we just, one of them is.
Yeah, we'll dig in, we're we're gonna always, you know, we always try to find efficiencies, so.
Maybe it's a lot of fifteen year olds on that bus.
Yeah.
They can start driving, actually.
Right. Thank you. So we'll, we'll keep, uh, we'll bring back.
Yeah, we've got some marching orders.
Yeah, we'll bring back these reports again in May and then again in June.
And we'll keep you posted and Kathleen will keep you posted. Thank you. Uh, alright, Victoria, facilities.
Yes, um, so like I mentioned earlier, the Amherst Building and Grounds Group has continued to meet regularly throughout this year. Um, you all know that we were working on our A M S roof and H V A C. At the last meeting, I told you I'd come with an update. Um, so the great news is that I have an update. And the second part of that great news is that at the next meeting, we will have a more firm update. Um, at the last meeting, E E I presented different stages of roof replacement and H V A C replacement. And because of the updated construction codes since A M S was built, um, structural engineers have suggested reinforcement of the structure with beams and cross bracing in order to support um, a new roof and the load of the roof and things like that. Um, this week, E E I and Roger Preston, our director of facilities, will meet with the Amherst Town Building Inspector, they'll do a walkthrough of A M S and they'll discuss the the structure and um, phasing of the project. Uh, we have a meeting on Friday, which will be after they meet. And we will have further understanding of the phasing that has to be done. Um, this will give us direction about what phases and areas of the roof or the H V A C can be done first. The reason that it's uh, so important to understand the real phasing is that if you go in and you do one area, but you don't complete, let's say you do one area of the roof, but you don't complete the H V A C in that area, you might have to remove some uh, materials that you've replaced when you then go in to do uh, the next stage. So um, it's cost effective to do certain areas at certain times, but we're trying to figure out with them, we need to understand what we're able to do. So the all in costs at this point are, I believe, around fourteen million, um, which is more than than we have. Um, but it is, um, you know, it's a, it's a staged project, right? So the goal for the Amherst Building and Grounds Group will be to be able to come to the next meeting. Um, I would suggest we invite Roger and E E I, possibly Banwell, to that meeting. Um, and for it to be a staged plan that is presented to the board. It's, it's not gonna ask for fourteen million for this one year. Um, which I I think is important for all of us to know while we're, while we're thinking about it. Um, it's also why as much information as possible is needed before the recommendations can be made. Uh, the group has not felt um, you know, strongly enough with the information that we have to be able to bring a recommendation forward. Um, so that's piece number one. Do we want to talk about or take any questions?
Estimating, do we know yet?
Five.
Five.
Five stages on the roof?
Yeah, so I think there was four to five phases and just a couple of notes on on Victoria's comments. So the the first thing that she was talking about, the cross bracing piece, that's not a suggestion, that's a, like, that's a have to, that's a requirement. Our buildings are, as we all know, old. Um, and so, you know, to get them up to code structurally to where they need to be today is, is much more significant requirements than than what was required in the past. So that is really what the building inspector tour uh, happening Thursday is to look at. So it's to say, you know, as we begin phasing this work, because clearly we have to phase it. And the focus for Roger, the focus for Building and Grounds is how can we mitigate those high, those those areas of the building that are fifty years old, the roof, and they just continue to leak and we continue to patch them and then they continue to leak. So how can we, where's the low hanging fruit, where can we start with phase one? So that's what they've called out as phase one. And I think Victoria has a great um, idea in bringing E E I and Banwell, because I think they really need to sit down and explain the phasing to this board in this forum. Um, so phase one would really look at that fifty year old, you know, high leaking section of of the roof and can we maybe potentially do that this summer? Um, but then there's some structural pieces that um, because of parts and labor and various things, maybe can't happen at the same time. So does that work with the inspector and the schedule and and those kinds of things? So that's part of the reason um, we're not to a recommendation phase yet. Um, and then with phasing, obviously, you know, you, if you can do it all at once, you 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 benefit from some cost savings, right? Because each time you phase it, now you have a new, a new set of people and and you're paying all those fees and and things. So trying to look at what phasing plan makes the most sense um, financially. Did I answer one?
Yeah, no, that's perfect.
Sorry.
Uh, any other questions on that? Next piece, Victoria?
Yep, so the next piece um, is regarding impact fees. And Amy Facy has been in touch with our town and as people, I'm sure have heard that impact fees are um, fees that are collected from developers when they're building for um, any, any way that the buildings, the residential homes would impact the schools. So they're, they are what they sound like they are. Um, and that's something that the town has been working on more um, with with more of a microscope, I guess, over the last several years. So we are finally at that point where money has been collected and there have been conversations um, with Amy regarding that. There's also a lot of rules about exactly where it can be spent. Um, so at our last Building and Grounds meeting, Amy had understood that there was money and was looking into the rules. And I expect to hear more on Friday. I don't know if you have any other tidbits you want to add, but.
Yeah, nothing specific, but um, yes, I've um, had a few meetings with the finance director at the town um, who informed me that there are impact fees that are available. Um, I expect that they would be split between Amherst and Sohegan and our typical sixty percent Amherst, forty percent Sohegan. Um, so there's roughly, last time I talked to her, it was around two hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars total. Um, so yes, there are very specific rules for how those can be spent. Um, one of the areas that I understand, um, they could be used for architectural and engineering fees to take a look at um, potentially, you know, capital projects um, at elementary or middle school. Um, they can also be used to potentially fund debt service because it would be a prior um, expense for um, an expansion project, so that did happen at the middle school. Um, there's a lot of documentation on how, uh, what projects are eligible, so before we move forward with anything, we want to uh, work closely with the town to, to make sure we understood uh, before we spent anything and then it would be a reimbursement um, to this, to the district. So we did talk about potential um, A and Bs to be used by the Amherst School District, so more to come on that as we find out more information.
Okay, something else. Um, at that meeting, our last meeting, we found out that there is a portable that is available from another New Hampshire school district that was utilized during COVID when they had some uh, space needs, that's how they augmented them. We know that our portables at Wilkins are at end of life and they are the piece that um, that really has kept Roger and Steve has told us, have, have kept them up at night. Um, understanding that if one of those buildings goes down, we have to bring those students into the building, um, that's already past, past or at capacity, um, however you look at it, so um, those portables are something that our district was going to look into, again, we expect to have a full update on Friday if that's something that we're gonna go down that route, is there anything to add to that?
So I, uh, I talked to the soup. So it, it is, uh, it is available. Not sure about, they had a three-year lease and they're paying the surrender fee. Um, because they're, um, they don't need it as, as, they don't need it for the whole three years. And uh, we'll probably do a conference call with the company to see what it looks like on how much it would cost or how much the, um, that company in talking with a soup and shaker, um, it was a, a lease which um, if you burn it, but you don't own it and, you know what I mean? So that, we'll be looking at all different pricing options, of course, what's portable, but the, the lease, they were under thirty-five hundred bucks a month. One of the, you know, the, the, the groundhog e- experience of this and I, I really ache for both Kristen and Kathleen, but after the vote, you know, we've already scheduled a meeting to what can we do with the building? And um, I am, and I know Kathleen is, I am not comfortable. If there is a way to be more respectful to families and to be more respectful to intervention space and more respectful to teachers and more defined space and if we need to prevent, um, you know, art on a cart, music on a cart, um, for what this could be affordable. I, I think our due diligence, our fiduciaries will look at it. And I'm not saying committing long-term big dough, but just saying, look at how can we expand space and really be respectful to those constituencies if it is affordable, I think it is, it's, it's worthy to look at it, certainly respect, respect this board's decision. But the diligence is we gotta look at it and see what it is because there's a cost-effective way to add space and be more respectful to those constituencies. We gotta bring it here.
Uh, I think, just in general, I think we'd be silly not to look at it, we said that if the school proposal failed on the budget again this year, one of the first things we were gonna do tongue-in-cheek was go trailer shopping, but I think it's, it's an item that we, we have to look at seriously. Um, but not as a replacement, merely, uh, purely as an added space factor at this point.
I mean, your back pocket.
Yeah, um, so I think, I mean, again, I think, do you need anything from us on that to look at it or?
No, just heads up, um, um, Roger and I may go to take a field trip to go see it. I did it once before, it was fun to go to see a portable, but. Um, we're gonna connect Roger with their facilities and Amy and I will do it with the kind, with, with the vendor and to see what kind of depreciation after it's been used for a couple of years, it's no longer needed, um, so we're gonna do our due diligence and we'll bring it, but it is um, anything that I can do to, to help Kathleen have a better day, I mean.
Well, I think the other thing we have to think about too is what that site work is gonna be, because you're adding a third building, you're adding sewer lines, septic lines, plumbing, water, electric.
They were there already.
Yep, so the site work piece is something that we're gonna have to look into because that location is where we were having some drainage problems in the spring.
Is that a problem with sewer?
Yes, that was a problem with the sewer.
Roger was gonna go divining, find the, yeah, the stuff, I heard, I heard right in front, it's a nice space for.
I mean, depending on what it is, it, it might need to, we might have to be creative, we will have to be creative, we know that. We're at that point.
You know, it, 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 I don't think it's a fool's errand, it's worth it, but we'll see.
Yeah, it's not permanent either, it's a stopgap for a while.
Yeah, and this, and this is not the permanent portable, you know, in the next twenty years, this is, this is a short-term maybe lease to, to alleviate this space and be respectful.
So.
There you go.
So the, the last piece um, is, well, I guess it's twofold. The, the two last pieces, um, Building and Grounds along with um, our meeting with Banwell Representative and E E I, one suggestion that, that arose in that group, and I know the, the, as a board, we've discussed this in the past, is to host another community session post-vote. Um, to just kind of listen to the community and ask what ideas um, the community has, and I think it would be, you know, we've al, we've always talked about the need to reach out and the need for other ideas, um, and I think getting something scheduled would be uh, a benefit to our school board um, and a benefit to the community, we know that we're gonna have to, you know, Amy's talking about impact fees and how we might be able to use some for A and E fees. We know that we've been talking about um, all the work that we've done in the last year had been um, kind of like post-contract, I guess, with, with the um, different groups that we had been working with, so there to, to have other plans to not come back with the exact same plan will require money. And for us not to ask the community for their input with that would be, I, I think would be the wrong decision. Um, so I, I would ask that if this group feels comfortable with that, that I can, you know, go ahead and connect with the S A U office to set something up.
I think something in May sounds pretty good for that, Victoria, I think it's gonna be sooner rather than later, and I think we get to June, there's a very short time where, where you have a captive audience where kids are in school. Um, what is it, June eighth or ninth is our last day at this point, I think we're knock on wood past the snow days. So, it's gonna be eighty-five on Friday, we better be. Uh, so I think that, you know, something in May before, obviously before Memorial Day is gonna be beneficial for us to do that.
Okay. Anything, Shannon?
So I think post-listening sessions are uh, critical, I think last year they were mildly attended. Um, I know the survey that went out last year yielded minimal results, I don't think that means we don't do it again.
Well, I think we do all this stuff again, I think we do all this stuff because we've been accused of not doing it once, and so to be accused twice of not doing it is infuriating to me.
Yeah, no, I'm not reacting though.
I, I'm reacting.
I understand.
I'm annoyed by it.
Okay, um, so forward march, I think that we need to do that, I would love to try to find a way to also get something like physical in the hands of some of our residents, I think that sometimes coming to a meeting is a barrier, I think that sometimes doing something online is a barrier. I don't have an answer to how we do that, but I think we need to try to find a way to do that. Um, the other place that I think that we need to have this discussion again is at the full S A U board meeting. I think that um, a lot of the public watches, you know, close to the election, right? They're not paying attention to the ten months that we're doing this. And so they listen to members in the community and I think where some of this fell apart was they were hearing different messages from different representatives um, who hold positions of power and authority within our S A U. So I would love to, and I don't know, you know, I'm new here, so you guys can all look at me and, and tell me that I'm crazy and that this is not the place or the, or the right thing to do, but I would love to have, you know, um, a, a mini-session, a working session, a half-day thing, a retreat, whatever it needs to be sooner rather than later, because we have real immediate, needed to happen years ago, problems in ASD that I do not want to um, see plans go off the rails because there wasn't consensus um, across the boards. So however, we need to get to that place where we're all focusing on doing what's best for the student, because it's the same student, whether it's an eighth grade student, whether it's a ninth grade student, their K to eight experience in our district is all of our responsibility and so we need to find a way um, you know, to come together in consensus, I know when J F A C was initially formed, that was the spirit of the committee. Um, and we went every month and presented at S A U meetings and, and it was collaborative and somewhere along the way, lots of things happened and I don't think it's beneficial to rehash the past, I am here on this board to move us forward. So that's what I would like to see happen, um, and I'm lobbying for that to you, I guess Tom is the chair and moving that forward on the, you know, S A U agenda, I don't know the inner workings of how those things happen, but um, I don't want to do everything we did again, come up with a different plan and then have folks feel like their questions weren't satisfied and, and then confusion in the community because it doesn't serve our residents, it doesn't, and, and more importantly, it doesn't serve our students.
Three, hundred percent agreeing.
Yep, so along those lines, um, when we talked about the committees earlier, we talked about kind of removing that title of joint facilities and replacing it with Amherst Building and Grounds, because that's really what our group has the um, the ability to do as a committee. Um, I think that group needs, we need a charter, we need a, a new, kind of a, not a new charter, we just need it to be refreshed a little bit. Um, I have some wording that I can suggest. I don't know that, um, I, I think the, the real issue here is that we need to have other people become involved, right? Um, as a committee, we need to be looking for another three to five people um, to join the ranks, we've had, you know, just like we know Ways and Means has had some people come in and come out, we've had some people come in and come out um, and change positions, you know, from community member to board member and things like that. Um, so I have, I have a committee charge on here. I can read through the committee charge and then we can discuss if there's any thoughts on that. We good with that?
Are, are we talking about the Amherst specific portion of it, are we talking about?
Amherst only.
I'm wondering if this is a better charge to determine after we've had a conversation at the S A U level, when we have a better focus?
Sure.
I, I, I mean, we can go over it tonight, but I don't know if it's anything we have to approve tonight, because I think this is going to stem again, as Shannon said, because it's gonna be a comprehensive district-wide thing, so we don't have um, you know, we're promoting one thing and somebody else is promoting another thing.
Yep, so I'm gonna read it out loud and that way, you know, all of us here in the room can hear it, um, as well as the, the other two districts. Um, and obviously, it's, it's up for edits, it's, there's no, no ownership of these things. Um, the Building and Grounds Committee will analyze and recommend in cooperation with appropriate district administration activities surrounding the maintenance of the properties and grounds of the Amherst School District. The committee shall include the Facilities Director, two A S B members and three to five community representatives to be appointed annually by the Amherst School Board. The committee shall meet monthly and conduct all business in accordance with RSA ninety-one A. So something simple along those lines, um, but that also gives, gives some direction. Um, and I think there's an importance, I feel that there's a strong importance and I think Roger Preston has discussed this throughout our, you know, couple of years, that there's an importance to keep focusing on facilities regardless of building a new facility, that's not, not the only reason that you would have a committee like this.
Yeah, and just to piggyback on what Victoria said, um, what really came out of our last meeting as well was, um, we, we have turned over a little bit, so we need more community members and I feel like right now is a prime time because people are engaged in at least, you know, as far as they understand that we have these big things happening in the district and that our facilities are ongoing, so it, it's a, it's a good time to make the ask. I'm not a fan of asking people to join a committee if we don't clearly state kind of what that committee is, is doing and the time expectation, so that's part of it. But one of our committee members, Mr. Bockett, also was like, we need a new charge from, from the board, so that's kind of where that, um, where that came from.
And obviously, you know, the, um, the Amherst Building and Grounds Group at this time is working on the ongoing plans for AMS, that group is not doing any work on more than Article twelve or any elementary planning or anything along those lines at this time, that's really something that this board um, has to determine what we want to do. With a short amount of time to get it, to give some.
Yeah, so I think to be fair to, to that committee who is continuing to meet, I, I think this board does need to say, yes, we want to keep Building and Grounds going and that is, that should be your focus, like. Or not, or.
You know, I think, I think we need to keep that committee going, as you said, we have active projects going on, so to, to cut that short and not to follow up on that, I think um, is negligent on our part, so a, again, I, I'll take your direction if it's a, if it's an official charge, if it's just a, a voice vote here and say, yes, we want them to keep going and continue focusing on the current projects. And then I think we can come back after we talk on an S A U level with a, with a wider array, but I think for right now, the focus needs to be on the roof and HVAC projects, um, and then potentially portables, if we have that conversation at some point here with, with E E I and Banwell and, and Steve and what their research discovers.
Yeah, I think that's right, I think um, maybe a discussion at the S A U regarding if there's a bigger, broader group that's going to meet and if there's, if there's not, then that's fine too, but I think we need to put out a call to the community at some point to engage, um, you know, anyone else who's interested in being a part of the conversation, at least at the Amherst level. If we're gonna keep the, the model for a joint sort of thing, then, you know, great. So.
So our meeting that's in May, I'm just pulling up, May eighteenth.
Our meeting, this group.
Yep, this group. Um. Okay, so when, when I, I'm going to, I, I'm, as I'm understanding, I am going to be the person who is going to get together with the S A U and find a time for us to meet um, to do a community outreach meeting. My thought will be to do that prior to the eighteenth, so that when we meet on the eighteenth, we can, um, we can have more information both regarding the middle school that we'll discuss at that meeting, regarding the community feedback and also regarding the impact fees and what we can potentially do with those, and we'll have some actual information about um, additional space, not replacement of space with that portable. Okay.
That's fine. Yeah, actually, it's probably better anyway, because the later you go in the month, the S A U calendar gets pretty full with a lot of spring concerts, so that week of the seventh, um, and maybe even early the week of the fourteenth is probably the ideal time. Okay, anything else on facilities? Okay, before, uh, our last, before our last non-public, uh, Steve has an update on the evaluation and assessment for the district.
We got some nomination to talk about real quick too.
Okay.
Um, just, uh, you know, we'll have a, you know, maybe not the next one, but we'll keep this notion of the assessment of district, right? Uh, district profile and district effectiveness uh, on the top of our agenda, just, um, so the, the original memo was more what, what I would call outputs, right? That was looking at quantitative data on a, on, on four pieces of data regarding math, regarding um, literacy. Um, and I think that's, uh, that's still there, but I also don't want, um, I also want to think about, talk about inputs. And this was raised at that meeting to talk about instructional time and evidence and research-based practices. And I'm also um, pretty committed to, and I hope with, with Mike's, you know, Mike's direction, um, to, to dive in back in and taking a look at um, a case study, uh, to follow a youngster, um, you know, from screening to um, assessment to intervention to progress monitoring all the way through the cycle to get a picture. And also take a look at, I mean, I've, uh, one of the things that I've done recently, and I'm actually gonna do it at Mount Vernon too, is I spent an hour with a reading specialist at Clark Wilkins, um, very, very valuable time for, for me to sit knee to knee and watch assessment in action and, and talk with experts in the field about what impacts reading acquisition, I'm actually have a follow-up coming up next week to continue that work, so. It's not gonna be just outputs, we're gonna have some inputs and also to, to look at, at, at some more data, but something I'd like the board to think about. The, the original memo about the, I think there was nine questions, right, putting all this in, in questions. Um, think about for next year, as we build this process and we build the infrastructure and capacity to focus on just one area and that area being literacy. Go soup to nuts on literacy, including instructional practices, including instructional time, including intervention, including best practice, including, it's just, I, I think it gives us a shot to build a model of effective use of data uh, and to understand what's going on in a critical piece. And I, my concern, and this is, and, and Mike and I've only had a brief conversation about this, but if we go after all nine, I'm concerned we don't do all nine well. And, but if we did one well as a building block and developed the processes and all the infrastructure necessary, and then the second year you do, you know, you do a couple more. Not married to it, just gaining this, and this isn't me trying, oh, she doesn't want to work, it's, it's not that I don't want to grind. But I think focusing on one, because, I mean, as you just said, we have a listening post, I called them right, listening post to talk about the facilities, we also wanted a listening post to talk about for the community, what do you want, how do you want to measure us? You know what I mean, that's, that's a lot, so. It's not complete yet, it, we're, and, and we've got retreat time and, and this is important, worthy work, this is good work. But think about focusing. But think about focusing just next year on understanding and all the data points and taking a look at literacy up close and not doing the nine questions. And maybe we can do that well. Not married to it, just dating it, maybe I'm engaged. Yeah. And it's, but it's really about what can we do really well and continually? And, and I'll, in, 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 in full transparency, I hope we can get these meetings to two hours. You know, and if we did nine questions, we did through the year, these are, you know, I've got two administrators are going to be in classrooms tomorrow morning. Me, I get to, you know, I do whatever. But you know what I mean? If we can, if we can focus and focus on one, I think we have a chance to make it manageable. Pick it up, pick it up when I'm putting down? Anyway. Thought, that's where, that's where, and you'll have more, and I'll do some writing for the next, I'll do some more memo writing on the next, and this is more of just big thinking.
Dominations?
Yeah, real quick, and we'll go in on public, but I did want it for the community, just a couple of quick things. There is an evaluation process for administrators. And what some people might not be aware is that our, our building administrators fall under the same statute as teachers. And in the same way, teachers are avail themselves of continuing contract, building administrators do as well. Now, the people on this side of the aisle don't avail themselves of the protections all the way through the state Supreme Court. But the people on that side of the aisle do avail themselves of protections all the way to the state Supreme Court. On which not many people realize that administrators in the, in the eyes of the law are classified as teachers under the statute of continuing contract. So we do regular evaluations, we do lots of discussions and everyone in the SAU and leadership will have documented evaluations to serve as and, and then, and we'll go as like, when we talk specifically about administrators, of course, we'll do that non-public. This is the same pattern of informing the public about process that we did with the teachers as we did that March. We're doing this one in April and we'll talk more, but I did want the community to understand that there is an evaluation process. There is a thoughtful classroom movement, there is corner, for cornerstone, it was closed, it's been late. And so, but there is a structure in place. And but we'll talk as we did with teachers, we're talking non-public more. Cool beans?
All right, so we'll open it up for our last public comment session of the night. If there are folks here in person that would like to make a comment, please come in the microphone. If you're listening online tonight on Zoom, raise your hand, full name and the avatar, turn on your camera, turn on your microphone, say your name and go from there.
Oh, for right now, Kevin?
Open it once, open it twice, and we will close public comments. So with that, I will take a motion to go into non-public tonight. Oh, I gotta, I just got a public comment now.
Oh.
So can we move Moosie into?
Close it, no, I'm just kidding. I got a chuckle, I got a chuckle, hey, but I got a chuckle.
Thanks, Travis.
I got a chuckle, it was worth it.
Moosie, we're going to move you into a panelist, so just bear with us for a minute.
I did, all right, there he is.
All right, Moosie, if you would like to turn on your camera, stay your name and town of residence and you'll have three minutes. Uh, we can't hear you, Moosie, you might be, are you on mute? You're on mute.
Oh, hi, can you hear me now?
We got you.
I'm almost in Brooklyn right now, so on my way from Amherst, listening in from the beginning. Excellent conversation, really encouraging, congratulations to all the new elected members once again. And I'll be around to help out with facilities or anything else that you may need. I feel very encouraged. Thank you very much for all the great work and thoughts that you have put in and will continue to do so. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Moosie, and thank you for your interest and support of the board and Ways and Means and, and running for a position last, last month. So thank you and drive safe. This seems like a dicey proposition. All right, so with that, I will now take a motion to go into non-public.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a second from Shannon. Let me know when you're ready, Victoria. Roll call vote, starting with Jason.
White, yes.
Gascoigne, yes.
Gothier, yes.
Beam, yes.
So we're nine oh four, we're going to non-public. Thank you to Kristen and Kathleen for coming down tonight. Enjoy the night and then I have a good rest of the week. Thank you tonight.